We're ready.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the San Rafael City Council meeting of Monday, June fifteenth, 2020, and ask the city clerk for a roll call of members present.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Present.
Councilmember Gamblin, like the record to reflect that he is absent. Councilmember McCullough.
Present.
Mayor Phillips.
Present. I'd like to invite you to address the public on how public comments can be made this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This meeting is being streamed live to YouTube where viewers can provide comments in the live chat, or welcome to attend by telephone by calling six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight, and the meeting ID is eight seven eight four zero eight three one eight nine four pound. If you're watching on YouTube and wish to comment on topics not related to this evening's agenda, please submit your comments now, and they will be read into the record shortly. If you are participating over the telephone and you wish to provide public comment, please press star nine when the mayor opens the public comment period. When is your time to speak? You'll hear a notification that you've been unmuted and you will have two minutes to speak. If you're, if you are submitting comments on YouTube to be read aloud, please write "public comments" in caps, introduce yourself, and submit your comments. Please note there is a character limit on YouTube, so you'll have to submit your comments in groups. Additionally, if you're planning to speak to the city council on matters not on this evening's agenda, please submit your comments on YouTube now, because that matter will be next on the agenda, two items next. If you've submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or letter, it has been forwarded to the city council and published to our website. Thank you.
Thanks so much. City council met in closed session, and I'll ask the Deputy City Attorney if there's a report, any reportable action.
Thank you, Mayor. No reportable action was taken in this evening's closed session.
Thank you for that. Next, we'll turn to the City Manager's Report. Jim Shutz.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, this is the time on our agenda where I typically make some announcements and updates and call out special events that are coming up. Lately, I've been devoting all my City Manager Report time to the coronavirus and the city's response, and I will provide a brief update on that. But tonight, I'd like to focus first, and most importantly, on the murder of George Floyd at the hands of the Minneapolis police, which was a breaking point in this country. George Floyd's life mattered, Rihanna Taylor's life mattered, Ahmaud Arbery's life mattered, Black Lives Matter. The list of names and headlines flashed across our screens is just too long and has to stop. The San Rafael City Council and the staff of the City of San Rafael share the outrage of the world community over the cycle of violence and racial injustice playing out across the country at the hands of too many public servants whose job it is to ensure public safety. We have seen in Minneapolis and throughout the country, what we've seen there doesn't represent the policing that we do here in our community. We're committed to good policy in our police department. We have amazing human beings of all races who care deeply for the community, and we know that there's still more work to do that guarantee that justice and nonviolence prevails. We recognize that words won't wash away the hurt from so many years of police violence and systemic racism against the black community in the United States. We also know that we are absolutely not immune in San Rafael or Marin to the plague of racial injustice or the unequal access to housing, employment, healthcare, education, and resources that have culminated in an unprecedented crisis in America's cities and towns. These social and economic challenges disproportionately impact not only our black community, but all people of color. We know that our community at this time is looking to city leadership to make right these injustices through concrete action and changes of how policing and government work for everyone in our community. There is much we're doing well right now, and there's more we can do, absolutely. A few quick examples: body-worn cameras became standard equipment in the San Rafael Police Department six years ago. Though unusual for a city our size, we hired a mental health liaison in our police department, and she does truly amazing and innovative work with our most vulnerable populations every day. Also unusual for a city our size, we hired a Director of Homeless Planning and Outreach, part of our executive team, and he's played a key leadership role in facilitating a twenty-eight percent reduction in chronic homelessness in San Rafael from 2017 to 2019. One of the few locations in the Bay Area where the rate of chronic homelessness is decreasing due to the actions of that position, working with the county and all of our service providers in a partnership countywide. The city council has also made getting affordable housing units built a top priority. We spent a lot of time on that in 2019 and in 2020, and have been approving projects that will house our lowest-income residents. But even with those few examples, there's still so much more to do. To start, the mayor has recently announced and appointed a task force to review San Rafael policing policies as they relate to the Eight Can't Wait guidelines, which is a project of Campaign Zero, to reduce and provide alternatives to the use of force. This task force includes city staff and several community members who attended the June fourth Black Lives Matter protest in San Rafael, and also high school students from our community to provide recommendations to the city. We completely understand that the Eight Can't Wait is just one step and not an ending point. Mayor Phillips has signed President Obama's Mayor's Pledge for mayors, city councils, and police oversight bodies to address police use of force policies. We're also continuing and enhancing equity training for all city employees, including the police department. Vice Mayor Collin had hosted a workshop last year for Marin County elected officials, facilitated by showing up for racial justice, or an organization called SURGE Marin, and more of these workshops will be taking place countywide in the coming months. We are developing a process for applying an equity lens to our annual goal-setting process, which we'll be doing in a couple months, and that's where we look at our service goals, our service levels, and the city council decision-making process. So it's going to be an ongoing conversation as we look at that as well. Still, there's more work to do, and we're looking to the community to be part of the solution. We see this as the beginning of the conversation. It's time for city leaders to listen and hear. We absolutely do not pretend to be the experts or to have all the answers, and we understand that we must first listen to our community and synthesize the pain into actions that make a true difference. City of San Rafael City Council and staff are committed to finding solutions to address systemic racial injustice that pervade our society and community. We invite every voice in our community to be part of the conversation, to ensure the public safety and economic opportunity of all San Rafael residents regardless of color, and work to eliminate the barriers facing people of color in our community. During my last City Manager update, I asked the police chief, Diana Bishop, to say a few words, and I'd like to do the same on this one, and turn it over to the police chief, Diana Bishop.
Thank you, Jim. I want to echo the words of our city manager and city council in condemning the violence that ended George Floyd's life. I have spoken out against this atrocity and marched in solidarity with protesters earlier this month to decry the racial injustice that underlies the violence against black lives in the United States. I know that for some, law enforcement in our country doesn't always live up to the motto "to protect and serve." I want to assure our community that the San Rafael Police Department is committed to being part of the solution and working with city leaders and our community to find better ways for us to serve, to help uplift, build trust, protect, and guarantee the health and safety of all people in San Rafael. We acknowledge the efforts made by our department to address the problems of racial and social inequity through training, de-escalation techniques, the use of body cameras, and our focus on community engagement. Although we are leaders in our profession, there is still work to be done by all police departments to deter the violence we have witnessed at the hands of police officers nationwide. We must also recognize that the same injustice and prejudice seen through the unlawful use of force against black and brown Americans lies at the foundation of so many other challenges facing our communities, including equal access to housing, education, and employment. In my thirty-five years in law enforcement, I have seen police departments become the default agency to respond to the social crises that have arisen throughout our communities as the safety nets of society are stripped away. The consequences of systemic racism, unequal access to education, poverty, mental illness, and homelessness all too often result in a call to 911 looking for a response. We have become the call of last resort. People are unsure of whom to call, or the help they need is not readily available to them. They call us when a person with mental illness is acting strangely in public, or when a drug user has almost overdosed. We must reimagine ways to make us safe that don't necessarily involve traditional law enforcement. If this means taking some of the above responsibilities away from us and placed with an organization whose primary training and existence is to deal with these issues, I am all for that. But there will always be the need for highly-trained ethical police officers. That is the makeup of the San Rafael Police Department. If after thoughtful dialogue and planning, some of what we do is directed towards others, I support that. The world is watching as city leaders and police departments respond. People are waiting for actions, not words. I stand ready, along with my fellow officers, to work with our community to listen and make changes that guarantee the safety and security of human and civil rights for all people in San Rafael. City Manager Shucks?
Thank you, Chief. Make sure I'm in the fight. You know that we're going to continue this conversation in the days, weeks, and months to come, starting with the mayor's task force that I mentioned to review the police policies. Today, we added a webpage to the cityofsanofel.org to collect community input, so we can keep our community up to date on this topic, and that page is cityofsanofel.org/racialjustice. So there's, there's content there now, but we know that it's going to grow over time as these conversations continue. I'd like to move on to wrap up my City Manager comments to a brief coronavirus update. I'm just going to hit the highlights, as we know, as I know we have a long agenda this evening, but it's, it is important. I want to make sure we, we add this as well. We're at seven hundred and twenty-five COVID-19 total positive cases in Marin County with nine current hospitalizations and seventeen fatalities. If the total positive count sounds higher to you, we've seen some recent spikes in San Rafael. Actually, I was on a call with the county EOC or Emergency Operations Center today, and it was referred to as a surge, which is a word that I hadn't heard them use before today. We've been talking about spikes and things like that, but we've seen, due to the rate of increasing positive cases, it is a significant increase. We've been responding through our own emergency operations center that we're running through the city of San Rafael with additional pop-up testing sites. We hosted one at the Borro Community Center yesterday that tested one hundred and thirty-five people. We partnered in that one with the Canal Alliance, which has been a fantastic community partner with us. And we worked with other partners to assist people who need help with where to isolate or quarantine, or with rental assistance. We added to our website last week an overview of all the work going into supporting people experiencing homelessness during the pandemic. It's an area that we've been spending a lot of time on. That update covers the contracts with hotels to get people housed, the eviction moratorium, emergency rental assistance, encampment outreach, expanded mobile showers, and expanded testing sites. All of this work is in partnership with the County of Marin's Health and Human Services Department, which is really the center of social services in Marin County. As you know, we've been trying to help people get back to work through making it free and simple to get a permit to use the sidewalks for outdoor retail and dining. Early last week, we added the ability to use parking spaces in front of a business as well. So it's not going to look like normal, but we're doing everything we can to help our merchants get back in business and get people jobs. Indoor retail was allowed to begin last Friday with a number of restrictions, and indoor dining is expected to be allowed at the end of this month, starting on June twenty-ninth, so our businesses can get more people back to work. Working with the Chamber of Commerce and the Business Improvement District, we're going to be closing Fourth Street on every Thursday night for a program called Dining Under the Lights, based on some new lighting that's been, is being installed along Fourth Street, similar to what started in the West End Village. We're bringing that down the rest of Fourth, and the Dining Under the Lights will start on June twenty-fifth. There's going to be a lot of restaurants participating, so there's twenty so far that have confirmed, and there's going to be more. And again, the purpose here is getting people back to work and getting people back to their jobs. The city contracts with the Downtown Streets team, and they'll resume part-time service starting tomorrow with new safety protocols, including physical distancing and hygiene procedures. We expect the downtown cleanup efforts that they do to move to five days a week, starting in July. Friday was the last day of our emergency childcare program that we've been having up and running since March for the children of essential workers. But it was, Friday was the last day because our regular childcare and day camp program started up this week. Recreation classes are being moved outside or held virtually. We have childcare going now at six sites and many recreation camps and classes. So I'll end there. I could go on a lot longer with coronavirus response. I'll just add that we have been sending out three or four public messages a week. If you haven't been getting those, anyone from the community and would like to, take a look at cityofsanofel.org/coronavirus, and you can sign up for those. My last comment is that there are so many important issues facing the city of San Rafael and Marin County. I just wanted to acknowledge a great community conversation that took place last Wednesday on the issue of sea level rise in the east San Rafael areas of the Canal, Bay Point, and Spinnaker neighborhoods. Vice Mayor Collin's staff and subject matter experts conducted a virtual town hall with about sixty people that went into four virtual breakout rooms for presentation and discussion. It was test-driving a new format for a community meeting, but we got a lot of great input, and more of these meetings are planned. So thank you for the extra time tonight. I appreciate it, Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to provide this information and these updates.
Well, excuse me. Thank you. Thank you, Jim and Chief. I just wanted to expand just for a couple of minutes on your opening topic, and again, I thank you for your, your clear and interesting And again, I thank you for your clear and introspective comments, of which I agree with and support those thoughts. These are profound times, and I believe the door is open for us to advance on a number of fronts. At a recent demonstration in San Rafael following the murder of George Floyd by certain members of the Minneapolis Police Department, organizers of the demonstration in our city, offered me the opportunity to declare my intent to announce that we would be reviewing our police department's policies and procedures. I am now formalizing that action. We shall do this with a committee made up of the city manager, the police and fire chiefs, the city attorney, the vice mayor, and me, along with a certain number of individuals from our community. The result of this review will be presented to our community and this council for ratification. Let me be clear, we are very fortunate to have an excellent police department led by our outstanding chief. I have on a number of occasions complimented them for their public support and performance. This review should not be interpreted in any other light. That said, I do think that we all concur that the discussion about the police enforcement provisions, currently known as "gate can't wait", will provide our community and this council with an opportunity to make certain we are in sync with our department regarding these policies and practices, so everyone knows our expectations. We owe this clarity to our community and to many fine police department men and women. This review may very well provide us an opportunity to further improve our law enforcement practices to everyone's benefit. This is step one. In addition, I believe the next step is for us to rethink our approach to certain aspects of law enforcement as it has evolved. I believe many of us recognized for a long time that while our police department is excellent, both in terms of policy and practices as well as personnel, they nevertheless are charged in some cases with a nearly impossible tax of addressing certain social situations posed on occasion by mentally challenged person, by some of our homeless, and others. We need to address some of these situations differently in the past than we have in the past. Fairness to our community, certain individuals, and to those in our police department who are attempting to respond appropriately. We shall address this issue after we've completed the review of our current law enforcement policies and practices. I look forward to this review, which will perhaps improve our excellent service to our community already provided by the many fine women and men in our police department. And thank you for allowing us that opportunity, particularly the chief and her concluding comments. With that, I will now turn to open time for public expression. It's an opportunity for you to address us on items that are not on this evening's agenda that you'd like to bring to our attention for us to be perhaps better informed as to what your thinking is. So I'll start with, Madam City Clerk, any items for us this evening under this agenda item?
Thank you. If you are participating by telephone and you wish to provide public comments, please press star nine now. And once you do, and I unmute you, you'll be notified that you've been unmuted, and you'll have the opportunity to speak for two minutes. And while I wait for folks to press star nine, I will ask that anyone who is on YouTube submit their comments for topics that are not on the agenda for this evening. And... You see, no phone. One moment. Did someone just receive a notification that they've been unmuted? I'm going to mute you one more time, and then I'll unmute you to see if you received the same notification. And now I'll unmute you. Unfortunately, we're not able to hear you. I'm going to go ahead and move on, and we'll try again in a moment. You're welcome to speak if you've been notified.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Sure. So my name's Crystal. I am a classified employee for the San Rafael City School District. I obviously just have a few questions in regards to the police expenditures that I did see on the 2019-2020 budget. I noticed that about $24 million was allocated to the police expenditure, which is about 30% of all the funding, along with a couple other numbers, the community development, which was only $4 million, and the economic development, which is about $785,000. You know, I just wanted to clarify, economic development, by my understanding, is the well-being, well, the improvement of the well-being and quality of life economically to our community. And with that, I just think that we need to drastically change our goals for the city if we're putting more money in the hands of the police department, who are currently doing more harm than good to the majority of our community members than to the schools, who are educating our future health officials and community members. I've worked with more than 100 families in the past few months, just making sure they have food on their table, roofs over their heads, and the best chance of their fair education as other kids who, you know, already have computers and internet, and whose parents don't work with two jobs or night shifts. Our community here in San Rafael is, you know, my numbers might be off, they're about 30% Latino, 56% white, with the remainders and the other minorities. And I just think that we're not really thinking of the larger 44% that's being affected by this budget on a daily basis. And, you know, I may not have spoken up before about these because this isn't really something that I discuss in my family at the dinner table. So I look forward to hearing more and being more involved, but I just wanted to see if I could clarify what exactly those police expenditures are.
Thank you. Moving on to our next speaker. We're trying you again. You should be receiving a notification that you're able to speak now. And we're still having difficulty getting you, so we'll try again. We have received public comments on YouTube. Name withheld. What is the ethnic racial breakdown of SRPD's use of force incidents in the past few years? How does this compare to the ethnic racial makeup of San Rafael?
My name is Susan McKinney, living in Terolinda. I'd like to express my support in non-police involvement when it comes to mental health, drug addiction, and homelessness issues. From a recent article in the IJ, San Rafael Police Chief Diana Bishop states, "I do support looking at different ways to respond to calls that are not law violations." What budget considerations are being made to reallocate funds to services like mental health and education instead of policing?
Hi, I'm Chadwick Harbor. In light of unprecedented public health crisis as well as social justice crisis, how is Marin County going to optimize voting experiences to encourage inclusive and safe voting?
Name withheld. We don't need task forces. We need direct action. Defund the police. Can San Rafael Police Department not look at me suspiciously when I, a high school man of color, walk by the police station department every day by the police department every day on my walk home?
Next comment, name withheld. Thank you for addressing Black Lives Matters and racial justice. I support.
Name withheld. I'd like to know why the San Rafael Police Association is asking for donations when SRPD's budget is $135 million, and sending a Blue Lives Matter flag and sticker in the mail with the request. Blue Lives Matter and the Thin Blue Line flag were created in opposition to Black Lives Matter. Black Lives Matter, greatly disappointed in the divisive symbol being mailed to me, and they mailed me one while asking for money. Unconscionable.
Name withheld. The status quo of devoting the majority of public funds into policing needs to end. I urge city leaders to divest funds from the police and invest in community services.
Name withheld. Police reforms have not worked. They certainly didn't stop the murders of Breonna Taylor, George Floyd, and various others. Defund the police. There are financial cuts to SRCS budget when SRPD is getting more money. This is why we say "defund the police."
Deus arcei letters to Mayor, Vice Mayor, about the appeal filed regarding 104 shaver, no confirmation. I feel this is relevant because community comment seems disregarded. Still wondering how resident comments are not considered.
Name withheld. It was the city council's decision to spend funds from the homeless initiative on increased police patrols in downtown. Hearing you hand wring about "that now" is beyond cowardly.
We've got one more coming? Michael Reynolds, with Renew Computers. I understand the SRPD budget is $24 million. $20.7 million is for personnel. Is this salary? We've got another one? What pressures are you under that public servants are not considered? Campaign contributions seem heavily developer. And I am now going to head back over to our phone line, and I am going to, again, you should be receiving a notification that you've been allowed to speak. We're going to try this again. Unsuccessful. I'm not able to hear you. I am going to go ahead and mute you again. And that concludes public comment for open time.
And thanks to everyone that's provided their comments. We'll now turn to consent calendar. I have a note that an individual would like to have, let's see, item number... J held. Are there any others that you would like to have withheld? I'll ask them, the public, anyone from the public wish to have any of the items held?
If you are participating by telephone and you wish to provide public comments, if you would please press star nine now. And this is for any items that are currently listed on the agenda on the consent calendar, which is 4A through 4M. And also, if you are participating on YouTube, please start entering your comments now. And we do have two calls.
Okay.
Hi, my comments weren't read from the YouTube chat during the public comment period, so I would like to speak now, if that's all right?
Yes, please do.
My name's Alyssa Gensberg, and as a longtime resident of San Rafael, I'm calling on the city council not to approve the budget on tonight's agenda. The budget was designed around the world-changing crisis of COVID-19, but there has not yet been an opportunity to update it in response to the worldwide event, but just the movement for Black Lives. The police account for 30% of San Rafael's general expenses expenditures, as I believe someone mentioned before, with so much that we need to do for our community in response to COVID, aren't there better places to be spending that? We see massive racial disparities across Marin. In some ways, it is the most racially disparate county in California, and certainly in policing, where, for instance, in Marin, we have Latino youth arrested at, I believe, nine times the rate of white youth for status offenses. Our teachers are facing unprecedented challenges in opening up schools again this fall. The police are an institution with their very roots in racism. We need to do better, and that needs to start tonight.
Okay, and was there one more comment? Thank you.
Did someone just receive a notification to speak? It's possible you've muted your phone in addition to me muting you.
Oh, dear.
I can hear you.
Oh, you can hear me? Good. Okay, sorry. Yes, this is the page of item J, and I just didn't understand from Mayor Phillips if that would be a discussion that would happen if item J would be taken off the consent calendar and discussed separately, or if that's something we should make comment on now. Well, first of all, thanks for asking. We will pull that item, so it'll be addressed separately. So if you could hold your comments until we get to that point, that probably would be more in context. That would be fine. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
We do have one more?
Yeah.
Do you have one more?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you have one more? Sounds like you may have the YouTube video on. If you can use the video, you'll be able to focus on your thoughts. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and mute. It seems like this is the same line you've been having some trouble with this evening. And checking for YouTube if we've received any additional comments. Aside from... There is one comment. Give me one moment. It is on item 4H. I am Dave Olson from Baypoint Lagoons, San Rafael City Council. The city council should remove the Baypoint Lagoons Assessment District consent item from today's meeting agenda, 6/15/2020, as the district was formed with a duration of three years thus expired in 1993. In 1994, Dave Bernardi intentionally and willfully misled lied to the city council, stating that the Assessment District was permanent as far as he was concerned. The city council then proceeded to extend the assessments for another year besides the written protest of the extension by the developer who owned more than 60% of parcels and several homeowners who verbally told the city council that the Assessment District had a three-year term. Last week, Bill Guerin claims below that the above lie made by city staff and mistakenly accepted by the city council was proof that the Assessment District was permanent. The city council only needs to look at Page 5 of the Formation Engineers Report to see the duration was three years, as disclosed to new homeowners. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to have any other item other than J held? In which case, is there a motion with regard to the remaining items?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
With the exception of J?
Correct.
Thank you. Move to the second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
Aye, Madam Carriers, 4-0, with one absence. We'll now turn to 4J, Francisco Boulevard West, Rice Drive to Second Street project. I did have a request that this item be held, and would ask that that person address the council at this time, presuming he or she is present.
Unfortunately, I don't have names, but I am going to, someone did raise their hand, so I will go ahead and allow them to speak.
Okay.
Yes, good evening, councilmembers. My name is Todd Hedin. I am the attorney for Joanne Immersion, who's a trustee of the trust which owns a property on Francisco Boulevard West, essentially where Toscaletto is located. And our complaint here, or objection to this item, is that there was no opportunity given to the property owners and business owners nearby, along the street, to comment on the effect that it would have on them for the street to be converted to one-way. And I don't know if I'm getting you through. Is my speaking getting through to the council?
Yes, Todd, we can hear you clearly. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. There are potentially alternatives that the property owners and business owners would like to have opportunity to submit to Department of Public Works. We don't know why the plan changed from what was shown on the city council, I mean, on the Department of Public Works website, maintaining a two-way street while also adding the bicycle paths as a widening of the sidewalk that is in place already. But that occurred somehow, and there added a factor of there being some problems with the interaction between Francisco Boulevard West, westbound, and the railroad track crossing at Second Street. But this is going to divert a lot of traffic. But this is going to divert a lot of traffic one block further to the west and exacerbate, if anything, the problem that already exists there for an hour a day in the evening commute home. And will affect all the property owners along the street for, you know, permanently for business purposes. So we, we think that there should be consideration given by Department of Public Works to an alternative such as.
Yeah, Mr. Hadeen, could you list your points so we're aware of them and wrap it up?
Yes, we'd like to be able to have signage considered. We'd like to be able to have a different construction of the bicycle path, considered widening it over the creek to some degree. We'd like to have the bicycle path considered, or a different route for it, considered along Rice Street and in the back part of, away from Francisco Boulevard so that the bicycles can enter where they're now proposing that cars enter. So all of those ought to be considered by Department of Public Works and allow the affected owners to participate in the decision.
And, and thanks for your input. This has been actually discussed for a period of time, but I'll ask our Department of Public Works, Bill Guerin, if he will comment. I think Bill's present, is he not?
Bill is present, but I do know he was just experiencing some technical difficulties. Let me see if I can get him on the phone.
Okay, thank you. We'll wait a moment.
Thanks, Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this issue. We did several evaluations of Francisco Boulevard as it relates to the Smart train crossing Second Street particularly. Traffic does back up there both in the morning and evening commutes. And a lot of the challenge associated with that intersection is, especially during those commute hours, cars coming north on Francisco Boulevard and turning onto the Second Street and then getting impacted by the, the train tracks immediately. What happens is the cars don't see all the lights that are there and end up crossing the tracks and potentially getting stuck on the tracks. And it's a chronic problem that needs to be addressed. When the train approaches San Rafael and the system goes into preemption mode, the car stuck on the tracks forces the train to wait until the whole system resets. And then the train has to wait for the cars to clear in order to proceed into San Rafael. What happens then is Second Street gets significantly backed up and we've observed this problem over and over again. Obviously, at the moment, the system has less traffic going through it, so in fact, it's not quite as big of a problem now. But in, in the past months, it was a huge challenge for us and a safety concern for Smart and for San Rafael. I know the police department has issued a number of tickets. They're trying to get people to understand that they're getting on the tracks, but, but that, it's a persistent problem that we, we can't otherwise fix. So what we've done is we've proposed, proposed making Francisco Boulevard West a southbound only street to Rice Drive. Traffic would approach from Francisco Boulevard going north, go through the Rice Drive intersection and ultimately end up at Lincoln, avoiding the, the West Francisco Boulevard intersection altogether. We think this is a much safer solution. We think it's a much more effective solution. We've done traffic studies to analyze whether or not this would have an impact on Lincoln and it does not. So we're confident that this is a good solution for San Rafael and for the traffic going towards the, the tracks. What it does is it brings people to Second Street a little farther west and they end up facing the traffic and hitting the red light as opposed to turning onto the train tracks at West Francisco Boulevard. So we think this is a good solution. It has, again, minimal impact on traffic and we're, we're very anxious to put this in place.
Thank you, Bill, and I appreciate your comments. I've, I've walked the site and perhaps others have as well. And frankly, I concur, particularly taking into consideration the safety factor. And also as a side benefit, the bike path is now joined or will be joined. So I think there are significant benefits, both from a safety standpoint and utilization of that area by, by some of our cyclists. I will be in favor of this, this item. Other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes, question to Bill Guerin. Bill, was there outreach to the affected property owners, including the owner in question represented by Mr. Hadeen?
There was. We've done a lot of outreach associated with, with this, including notifying the affected businesses nearby. And Toscalito Tire and Mr. Hadeen wrote a letter to us at that time expressing concerns. We went back and studied the traffic based on the concerns that were expressed. And that, that information is included in our staff report tonight. But we, we did get outreach. The only negative comment we received about the final configuration was from Mr. Hadeen and other comments were related to keeping the street open during construction. But we did not receive any other negative feedback related to this idea.
Thank you. And I, I suspected, or I knew from the report that you'd had those discussions. But what I'm wondering is just more broadly, in the outreach, I'm assuming that other than this particular parcel owner, you didn't get feedback that's, that was opposed to changing Francisco Boulevard West to a one-way configuration north of Rice?
That's correct. We did not receive any feedback that was against this idea, except for the, the letter that we received.
And the safety issue here, which we're all familiar with, and in fact, I don't know if I've mentioned it to you, but I've mentioned to others that of all of the complaints I've received about all of the changes in signalization and intersection crossings as a result of Smart, this one intersection and this particular turning movement right off of Francisco Boulevard West onto Second Street is the most contentious issue. Everyone complains that when they make a right on green, they find themselves stuck in the middle of the crossing area at risk of Bayfield being hit by the train because there's a red light in front of them on Second Street eastbound. So I, I think that there's a fundamental safety issue here that has to be solved. And when you say that there are no other good solutions other than converting this to a one-way section of, of street, were there any other possibilities that didn't substantially impede traffic or the train or both?
Councilmember, we've, we've actually made significant changes at this crossing. Since Smart started doing their testing, which now is months ago, we've, we've improved the signal timing, we have changed the signals, the, the, the types of signals that are out there. We're talking about putting, painting this street with a do not block sign. We've done a number of things trying to make improvements here. They've had some impact, but they're, they're just not effective in terms of keeping people off the tracks and particularly in a preemption situation. The train can, can block the intersection for three or four minutes at a time if, if the preemption has to reset. So everything we've tried has, again, made some improvement, but has not been enough to, to change the situation there. It's a safety concern, it's a, it's just a pure traffic, you know, flow concern. And we think this is the right solution to, to make changes here that will actually be effective.
Thank you.
Ask if there's any other additional public comment at this time?
It does look like we have a.
Am I, I don't know if I'm being heard. This is Todd Hadeen again.
Todd, I've asked for other public comment at this point.
Okay, but I'd like to respond if I may.
Let's first hear from the remaining public, if there are any.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Hi, I'm resident of San Rafael and represent owner of one of the buildings on Francisco and would like to have comment heard that, that the, the city is not accurate in, in stating that the public was informed and the owners were informed to make, you know, time to make comment. We were told by the city that this is our chance. When we called and asked about how do we make noise about this, how do we say this is not a good idea? We were told because of the COVID virus, there was no meetings and there was nothing that had been done at this point, that the money had to be used this year or it would be lost. And this is why it was being shoved through. And we're very frustrated and Mr. Hadeen is very accurate. I've talked to several other owners and there was not proper opportunity for us to make comment. And it will have a significant impact on the property owners on that street as, from a business standpoint and a value standpoint.
I'd like to, I'd like to return to Bill for just a moment and respond to the comment that there was not deemed by at least the two individuals we've heard from. There was not adequate, sufficient public input. But I just don't know what to make of that. So Bill, if you could help us better understand what the outreach was?
Well, I'm not aware of the, the fact that we cut off comment during the COVID virus epidemic. We, we outreach to the Chamber of Commerce, we specifically sent notifications to the affected businesses. We have, have spoken directly with the affected businesses along Francisco Boulevard, face-to-face or over the telephone, depending on, you know, what, what time during the coronavirus all this was happening. But we, we spoke to people before and by telephone otherwise. So we, we've done significant outreach and again, we have not received negative feedback.
Okay, thank you for, for the comment. Other questions by council members returning from public? Anyone? Councilmember McCullough?
Yeah, you know, Bill, my, my assumption is that those who have complained about this, that is representatives of property owners are worried that there's some kind of impairment of property rights, either in the near term or in the long term. Have those property rights or that impairment, has it been articulated to you with any kind of specificity? In other words, for example, is there a parcel that's going to be effectively landlocked or nearly landlocked, substantially landlocked by this reconfiguration? And if so, are there any means to mitigate that impact? And if you can't answer that because that wasn't shared with you, to the extent that we're going to allow Mr. Hadeen to speak again, I'd like to hear it from him.
I can answer the question. There are no properties that are landlocked by the decision that we're making here. There are two businesses along Francisco Boulevard before Irwin. There's a roofing business and a equipment rental business. We've spoken to both of those businesses. They express concern about the street being closed during construction and express concern about turning radiuses of vehicles going into and out of their driveways. Those businesses, I think, are satisfied with our answers to those questions. We are not planning to close the street during the, during the construction project, except to put the one-way traffic change in place. And that'll happen after hours, so it won't affect those businesses. As you move south down Francisco Boulevard, you get to Irwin Street. Between Irwin and Rice, there are no businesses, there are no driveways affected by this. It's all along the creek side, so there, the bike path will be adjacent to the creek and there are no businesses going down that way. The one business that had a, a, a back driveway was an illegal culvert in the channel that's being removed as part of this project, but the Maserati dealer is aware of what we're doing and, and it's not affecting their business at all. Traffic going to, for instance, Staples or Sprouts or Starbucks or Toscalito Tire. The businesses along Irwin Street, the traffic flow is to go onto Rice Drive, go north on Dubois and turn right onto Irwin to the east to access those businesses. So no one is landlocked, no one is, is directly affected by this, except for traffic flowing northbound from Francisco Boulevard West to Irwin Street and to these two businesses that are on Francisco Boulevard West. So to answer your question, council member, there's no one that's landlocked in this. Lisa may want to comment on the, the impact to the businesses based on us making changes to the streets in general. She, she did some research on that and may be able to address another question of yours.
Yes, I can, I can address that briefly. If, if a business isn't landlocked by a change in, an improvement that changes the traffic flow, my research indicates that there is no compensable damage just by the change in traffic flow, even if there is some detriment to the business.
Okay, I'll ask Mr. Hadeen if he has a follow-up comment that he previously requested. Let's build a respond to that and then for the council to decide if we're going to act upon this item or defer our decision. So Mr. Hadeen, final comments?
All right, yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I don't know if, what the traffic studies show and those have not been shared to the best of my knowledge with the property and business owners along Francisco Boulevard West. Toscalito does get quite a bit of business opportunity from people traveling on Francisco Boulevard West northbound. It's a tire and, you know, tire and brake business essentially. The, you know, I, I don't know if the alternative was considered of not allowing a right-hand turn at Second Street for northbound traffic. That would be an easy enough route to get to, for those cars which need to cross over the railroad tracks and go north on Highway 101. They could go up to Fourth Street or Fifth Street and then make a left turn without the necessity of making a right turn across the railroad tracks. I don't think that the cars that are making a left turn at Second Street to get to Highway 101 South are a problem because there's, there's no stoppage from the time you turn and to get across and onto the highway on ramp. So I don't know that that's a big problem and there could be temporary signs, or I mean, signs that are timed like the railroad has elsewhere and along Ford, I'm sorry, along Hetherton, that you can't make a, you know, left turn at certain times or a right turn at certain times. All of those are alternatives which could be useful and probably a third or more of the traffic that now goes northbound on West Francisco Boulevard are heading out to San Anselmo direction rather than, you know, across the freeway. So directing those, the traffic further north allows them to reach Third Street and, and head west as well as to get to Fourth Street or Fifth Street and head east. So, and what's going to happen with the, with the roofing company and the rental company is that all of those big vehicles are then going to be going around in a big circle and, and heading up past, you know, the Bio Marin buildings while, you know, during business hours.
Good, Mr. Hadeen, if you could wrap it up, I think we get the, we get the picture.
Okay, well, that's it. It's all in the letter I sent, so it's, if the council can consider that, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
We do have your letter, thank you. Bill, any, any follow-up comments?
Yeah, I, I agree that traffic heading to Third Street is unaffected by this. That's not the movement that we're concerned about. We're concerned about the cars that do turn right onto Second Street. They're typically trying to get across traffic and get to Irwin Street to go north. And that's the, that's the particular movement that's of concern to us. The gentleman mentioned going up to Fourth Street or Fifth Street. Fourth Street is quite crowded at, at Tamalpais because there's a convergence of the Fourth Street traffic, the train again crossing Fourth Street and traffic trying to turn on to Tamalpais from, sorry, to turn on to Fourth Street from Tamalpais. So that's a consistently congested intersection and you can't actually proceed to Fifth Street because of the queue cutters and the setup for the, the train tracks. because of the queue cutters and the setup for the, the train track. So that going to Fifth Street to turn east is not even possible. So, so we did study these things. We believe that this is the right solution here. It's, there's not a whole lot of traffic, but the traffic that does make those movements during rush hour are significant and have a safety impact and a traffic impact to smart. So we, we think this is the right solution to move forward.
And thanks for your, for your comment. Returning to council for...
Mayor, if I may, I'm, I'm sorry, we didn't officially close the public comment period. I wanted clarification as to whether or not that was closed or were two still remaining.
I apologize. And yes, unless you have additional comments queued up, if there's anyone wish to speak on this item?
There's one over the phone.
Let's hear that person.
Yes. Hi, I spoke earlier and we are one of the, representing one of the owners of the property.
Right. Do you have additional?
I, I do. To just to support Mr. Hadeen's position on it and other owners of the property that really felt like this was our first and only chance. We were not, they did not share the traffic reports with us. We asked for them and this was supposed to be our first chance to get to speak about it. And here it is, already a contractor picked and ready to be pushed through tonight. And I just feel that that's very unfair in...
We understand, we understand the points you previously made and are now repeating. Any new information we need to take in consideration?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
There are two over YouTube. One is from Micah Urans Gilati. I fully support one-way street to create safer ways to go around Centerfell. Thank you. And name withheld. Please do not accept the staff recommendation. Already I have given up on Central Centerfell, driving southbound on 101 and loop around on West Francisco. This is not the right solution. That concludes public comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll close public comment, bring back to council for questions or follow-up, perhaps a motion if you're ready to decide them. Councilmember McCullough.
If I could ask a question of staff of Bill in particular.
Sure.
Bill, is there any urgency to the timing here or could if we decided to hold this matter over for two weeks, could we address this in two weeks without any prejudice to the bids or to the project?
The bids are unaffected, council member. The urgency of the project is doing work in the creek during a very specific window of time that begins right about now, June 15th and goes through October. We also have a grant that expires in December. The bulk of the funding for this project is tied up in a, in a urban greening grant of 1.2 million dollars. And we need to spend those funds before the end of the year. That's a big concern for us as well. We want to make, we want to have as much time as possible to put this project in place during the, the construction window of the work allowed in the creek as well as the, the impending expiration of the grant funding. So there's two very urgent reasons to proceed forward.
So being mindful of that though, if this were tabled just for two weeks, would it prejudice all of these elements you've mentioned or could we still accomplish what we need to if the decision were made to green light this in two weeks as opposed to today?
I would prefer to continue on, but, but to your question, the, the, the window for spending the funds is the most significant thing. I think we can get the creek work done. I just need to know that I've, I've spent the 1.2 million dollars by the end of the year.
Sounds to me like, perhaps there's a break. I'm not sure why or how or if it's even factual, break in communication. However, it also strikes me that perhaps we've heard from those individuals this evening represented by, by the two individuals. Anything that was stated tonight by, by them, did that in any way change your mind or, or are you, would you suggest we delay on this or do you think that you've already addressed their, their concerns and issues?
I believe we've addressed the concerns. The, the report was obviously attached to the traffic study was attached to our report tonight. I'm a little disappointed that the Toscaletto Tire and their representatives didn't get the report before, but I don't think it has an impact on the outcome of what we're trying to do here. The recommendation we're making is based on the traffic studies. The recommendation is a safety improvement project. I personally don't believe that, that the two weeks will change that, but that, that's certainly for the council to decide.
Thank you. Councilmember McCullough, final concluding comment?
Yeah, here's what I'm struggling with. And I telegraphed it earlier. If what the two individuals who made public comment are concerned about is truly an impairment of a property right, then I think it's worth giving them a little more time to better explain that. But if what they're complaining about, and it's really what we heard tonight, is some degree of convenience to their customers or vendors or suppliers or employees, that is moving from one circulation pattern to another and having to relearn that, then I'm less sympathetic. And when, and no, this is no offense to Todd Hadeen because he's a very good practitioner, but when he engages at the traffic engineering level, I'm not hearing that there's a property right that truly is being affected. So that's what I'm struggling with. I think more time should be given if there's really something vital here. But if it's just about convenience and reeducating consumers and vendors, then I think that we should proceed. And unfortunately, a convincing enough case wasn't made for me to, or in favor of taking more time. So I'm inclined to vote for proceeding now and approving this.
If it's okay with, oh, Councilmember Vice Mayor Collin, sorry.
I was actually just going to ask Councilmember McCullough to expand, but he finished expanding on what he was, what you, what you were driving at, because I heard the same thing, the argument that you, the arguments that you laid out. So I'd be prepared to support your motion if you make one.
In the interest of moving forward, is there a motion with regard to this item?
Well, I would move that we approve the matter, but I don't have in front of me the title and the exact method of approving.
Well, actually, there are two elements. Vice Mayor Collin, could you provide a motion for us regarding the first item, the resolution awarding the city manager, et cetera?
Can I toss it to Councilmember Bushy because I'm on my laptop, so I can't have...
I printed it out.
Councilmember Bushy, please come to our rescue.
I move that we adopt a resolution awarding and authorizing the city manager to execute a construction agreement for the Francisco Boulevard West Rice Drive to Second Street project, city project number 11364 to Gilati Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $2,259,787 and authorizing contingency funds in the amount of $253,498 for a total appropriated amount of $2,513,285.
Well done. Is there another, is there a, is there a second to the motion?
I will second that. Thank you.
We'll second it. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm Senator Currys with four votes. Item number JII, resolution authorizing city manager executed deductive change order for the Francisco Boulevard West Rice Drive, second project, city project number 11364 in the amount of $575,285.
I move that we adopt that resolution.
And?
Second.
Move the second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm Senator Currys, four zero with one absence. We shall now move on to item, other agenda items, five A, Plan Bay Area 2050, priority development areas, PDA. Gentlemen.
Thank you. I'm going to get the present PowerPoint pulled up real quick. All right. Is everybody seeing my screen?
Yes.
All right. So this is, is a follow-up action from our May 18th meeting. And so regarding priority development areas for 2020. So a little bit of background, PDA is a priority development areas. In the past, it was a kind of a half-mile indiscriminate circle around a smart train station or a rail station. Now, as we kind of move forward, PDA boundaries, MTC and ABAG, the jurisdiction are the regional agency that oversees priority development areas in Plan Bay Area 2050, have now allowed jurisdictions to set these boundaries as long as they're within PDA eligible area. The big thing with PDAs is that they would not impact local zoning or land use authority and they will not impact or prejudice general plan 2040. Additionally, with the PDA, there's no obligation to meet or zone for Plan Bay Area growth estimates, which would be conducted as part of this process. And additionally, part of why we're discussing PDAs now, then since we haven't discussed them necessarily in the past, is really around our housing crisis. And the idea about moving forward to the PDA nomination for both the Northgate and the Canal neighborhoods is in line with city council direction to find opportunities to, to address this housing crisis. And finally, the PDAs are, offer a process to help us plan for the next regional housing needs allocation process, which is about to begin in 2021 and 2022. So that's a lot. The, the, the big question is what does a PDA designation commit the city to? This, if anybody participated in some of our community meetings, they may have already heard this spiel, but it's, it's important to kind of reiterate that by state law, Plan Bay Area 2050 is strategically, is strictly strategic and shall not require a city's land use policies and regulations, including its general plan, to be consistent with the plan, in this case, Plan Bay Area 2050. So what do I mean by that? Is that a PDA designation would not commit the city to those growth estimates that are included within Plan Bay Area 2050. What a PDA process does do is that it asks the city to have a specific or a precise plan adopted by 2025. And to do that, you need to do that in order to maintain the PDA eligibility. And the PDA eligibility is the important thing which allows cities to access designated funding and resources to conduct a community-driven planning process. Now, what's important to kind of distinction with that community-driven planning process is that the specific or precise plan that would be funded by the PDA designation does not need to plan for Plan Bay Area 2050 and it does not need to be limited to the PDA area. So an, an example would be if we had a specific or a precise plan conducted for using PDA designated funds for all of Terre Linda, we could look at all of Terre Linda, using the funds that were designated for solely the Northgate PDA. And why that's the case is that really a jurisdiction can change or ascend the PDA boundary at any time. So changes would reflect, be reflected in that next PDA update cycle, which happens about every four years. So how did we get here? I mentioned this is a follow-up action item from May 18th. At that meeting, city council agreed to submit a letter of interest for Northgate and Canal PDAs, but directed staff to conduct further outreach. The next step that's required is what's called an authorizing resolution and that's required by the end of June, June, and that finalizes that letter of interest submittal that we did on May 18th. Now, I, again, I want to reiterate, a PDA designation, the importance of the PDA designation is it allows access to designated funding and resources to facilitate a community-driven planning process. So as part of that direction from May 18th, we launched quite a bit of community outreach. And I, I do just want to thank the community because we were test-driving a lot of different tools that, that we hadn't necessarily used before. So there, there were some starts and goes that we had to get through, but I, I do want to thank everybody who participated. So the first part of that outreach plan included webpages and FAQs. So we asked the public to send in questions and we would answer them. We received quite a few questions, which when combined, a total of about 31 frequently asked questions that were posted onto the website. Additionally, we maintained a PDA-specific public commenting sites for both the Northgate and the Canal PDAs. And then finally, we conducted seven virtual community meetings, which have a total of about 96 participants. That was three meetings for the proposed Northgate PDA and three meetings for the proposed Southeast San Rafael Canal PDA. And then we also held a meeting with League of Women Voters, Transportation, Land Use and Housing Committee. Now, announcements for the community outreach were sent on May 27th and that included social media, like Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor, Instagram. We also included a PDA-specific newsletter that went to the city's email listserv. And then we also sent a physical mailed paper notice about this community outreach. So where we are in this process? So MTC and ABAG is accepting the local nominations for the PDAs through this letter of interest. That submittal happened on May 18th of our letter of interest. And the current action is whether or not to proceed with an authorizing resolution by June 30th for new PDAs, which would be the, the action that finalizes the letter of interest submittal. What was included in the, the resolution that's currently being considered were the following PDA boundary proposals. For the Northgate PDA, this included the Northgate Mall, the Northgate 3 and the Northgate 1 Centers. It includes the Las Gaias Office and Gas Station Areas. What it does not include is not Olivet Cemetery, the areas east of Highway 101 that were PDA eligible, and then also the areas south and immediately south and west of the Civic Center Train Station. For the proposed Canal PDA, this included the major boundaries of the Canal Neighborhood, which is included in our general plan 2020. It includes the Canalways Property and it also includes the areas of Highway 101 along Anderson Drive and Woodland Avenue. As you can also kind of see it, the jagged kind of southeastern border, that just follows the city's boundaries along the ridge line down by the wastewater treatment plant. What this PDA does not include are the Spinnaker Bay Point areas as well as the areas that were along San Pedro Road that were also PDA eligible. So next steps, if council does accept this resolution and adopt it, staff would submit that letter of interest for consideration to the MTC ABAG Board for approval, which is slated to happen in August, September. Once MTC ABAG has reviewed the letter of interest for PDA nominations, all the approved PDAs would be included in the Plan Bay Area 2050 final blueprint analysis. And that analysis, it's going to have those growth estimates, that's going to talk about housing units. But again, those aren't required for us to meet. Those are for the purposes of Plan Bay Area 2050. Additionally, in September, MTC staff has let us know that it's going to be a potential MTC ABAG call for funding for PDAs. While that may change, there's a lot that's in flux. The next round of funding is slated to be 2022 because that's when the, the Plan Bay Area 2050 process will end for this cycle. Now, just to do some expectation setting, if a resolution is adopted, we're not immediately going to move into a specific or a precise plan process. We're going to be working to, to get funding and staff does not anticipate work to begin on a community-driven planning process until the funding for such a process is secured. So that, you're not going to hear something from us until most likely after September regarding this. Now, the current options for council, first would be adopt resolution with staff's recommended actions, adopt the resolution with modifications, direct staff to return with more information, and finally, take no action. And with that, that's the presentation.
Well, excuse me. Thanks, thanks again for, for the update and, and job well done. Let me just ask a real broad question, and that is if we accept the funding for the planning and we go through the planning process, and that's not inexpensive, as you know, and we conclude with a document that, that's going to incorporate the community and planning, et cetera, et cetera, and we then decide to do nothing, is there any consequence of that action?
That's a good question. So the, the, the main consequence would be by 2025. And that would just us eventually losing our PDA eligibility. Because that's that next step is we would need to approve a precise or a specific plan by 2025. But if we did, yeah.
We get to 2025 and we've done nothing. I'm not suggesting that's the direction, but a question. We get to 2025 and we have, I guess, two possibilities, decision trees, if you will, yes or no, we've done something, we've not done anything. If we do nothing at that decision point, 2025. The consequence of, of that action, a lack of other action, if you will, what happens?
The, there, there's not much, quite honestly. It just wouldn't be included in the next round of Plan Bay Area 25, or what would be the Plan Bay Area at that point. So probably... or the, what would be the Plan Bay Area at that point, so probably Plan Bay Area 27.
So what action would we take at that juncture that would result in us proceeding down this path?
To, to my understanding, council wouldn't need to take any action. When, when we would reach 2025, we would just lose the PDA eligibility for not having an adopted specific or precise plan for those neighborhoods.
So we would have to do something to be eligible after 2025. For additional funding, for, that funding for what purpose?
That funding would be mostly at that point, the assumption there would be that we would have had a specific or a precise plan adopted. But, I, once we reach 2025, the, the main piece that these grants would allow is access to infrastructure financing, infrastructure funding. So if we take the downtown precise plan as an example, there's been about, and, and Paul may have a better number on this, there might be about $3 million in infrastructure improvements that we had conducted by having a PDA eligible area in downtown.
And so once again, we could decide, council at, at that point could decide its course of action. Do nothing, maybe some improvements.
Yeah, exactly.
That's still at, at, at the city or the council's discretion, sole discretion.
Exactly. Sole discretion is the key there. This is a voluntary program.
You mentioned in your presentation, and thanks again for doing so, that there were 57 comments with regard to the North San Rafael, Terolinda, if you will, PDA. What was the, the nature of, of those comments?
It's a good question. I, I, I'm going to try to get, I, I don't want to speak for anyone, but I.
Understood.
Yeah, generally, our, our takeaways were that there, there's interest in doing a specific or a precise plan process, and there's openness to a PDA process. But that, that involves a lot of community trust. And there's, there's a need to make sure that if we go down that process, that we do follow a community-driven planning process. Both of these areas haven't had plans for a while. And there, there's a, a need in the community that, that's been expressed for those plans.
Right. And 57, of course, community is much larger than 57 individuals, but you never get 100% engagement. So I'm wondering if, if it, your opinion now, which of course I respect, both you and Paul, how was the outreach? How effective was the outreach to the community, that immediate community?
I, I, I'll, I'll give a shot, and then Paul, if you want to say something too. I, I was heartened to see how many people kind of took the leap to do a virtual community meetings, to participate online, the emails that we received. I, I know I was nervous trying to put together that, that community outreach. And, and, and there was a lot of understanding, and a lot of, lot of interest, a lot of emails, good questions that that came in.
Well, this is a difficult period, witnessed by this evening's meeting, I would suggest. Makes it awkward for some, and, and we have to be cognizant of that and, and sensitive to it. Paul, do you have any additional comment that'll open up to other council members?
Frankly, I was also really pleased at the, at the response we got to the format, because, you know, we were, we're, we're treading new territory here with how we do outreach, given where we are right now, and there were so many cooperative people to participate in a very short period of time. And, you know, that's, that's a little uncomfortable, but it, I mean, it worked, I thought it worked pretty well for, for what we did. So I'm just real pleased with the, with the feedback we got. You know, I, I also want to thank everyone for, for submitting some very good questions. And if you look on the website, we have over 30 frequently asked questions. A lot of them get into very, into a lot of detail, and it was, it was good to get that kind of feedback.
I think I might know the answer, but I'll ask, and then turn it over to Vice Mayor Colin. When we received the 57 comments, or, well, 57 comments, that, that some of which certainly probably sound like the majority containing the questions or clarification requests, et cetera, et cetera, have we responded to each and every one of those?
Yes.
So, so we tried to respond to every single question, either with a, a personal email, with, with Paul or I responding with, with a specific response, or i- if the question had already been answered on our FAQ, we made sure to make sure that they, that we directed them to that FAQ with that answer.
And thank you for that, Vice Mayor Colin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ethan and Paul, for bringing this back to us. So, something that came up during the sea level rise town hall that we had last week was around the PDA boundaries in the canal. And one of the questions or comments was, I mean, it was in the context of sea level rise, would we want to consider expanding the boundary to include Spinnaker and Bay Point, knowing that when we're looking at future planning and development possible in that area, that those would also be areas that could have the impacts of sea level changing? So, and I said, oh, I will bring it back and, and, and see what, what you think and what my colleagues think.
That, that's a good question. The, the, the two pieces that I, I would say to reiterate that immediately is that this is the beginning of the process, so we have the ability to change the boundaries. MTC and ABAG is very aware that boundaries may change as we go through the community-driven process. And part of the reason why there is that funding is to have those conversations and help facilitate those conversations. So that would, that may go through that conversation, and you may want to know. Paul, follow up?
Yeah, I wanted to add to that. I think it was, it goes hand in hand with what Ethan mentioned earlier, and that is, we may have a PDA boundary, but we can go beyond that boundary to include in a specific plan or a precise plan for that area. And you are absolutely correct, Spinnaker and Bay Point are as vulnerable to sea level rise as most of that other area, and there are other areas that border and are outside the boundaries of the PDA that are also vulnerable to sea level rise. So these might be areas to consider when we look at that boundary for sea level rise planning purposes.
Okay. I just wanted to mention that because I know we're, we'll be going out for other grants related to sea level rise specifically, so there's going to be an intersection probably between those two. Mayor, if I may, one other question. Ethan, your presentation, you mentioned that MTC would review our application or may or may not approve it. Is there a chance we wouldn't get approved?
So, generally, what MTC staff has said is that if there's a local nomination, they very rarely don't approve those PDA nominations. But there is this actual step that does need, this formal step that needs to happen, which is the approval of it. But to our knowledge, we don't expect.
Okay, okay. I just wasn't sure. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mayor.
Council member McCullough.
Yeah, I did have a question of staff, but let me address myself to council member or Vice Mayor Collins' comment, because I think it's a fair one. During the last meeting, or the last time when we addressed this, and we, and I asked that we redraw the boundaries for the PDA for the Canal neighborhood to exclude Spinnaker and Bay Point. My concern was that because a PDA is designed in general to seek greater density, it might give anxiety to those people living in single-family homes in the Spinnaker and Bay Point neighborhoods that were superimposing a PDA on top of what is a relatively low-density neighborhood. That said, and I still think we should exclude tho- those neighborhoods from the PDA at this point, but as Ethan so astutely noted, there's going to be a lengthy planning process where we need to work very closely with the community, and if it turns out later on that it makes sense for sea level rise or perhaps other very long-term considerations to include these single-family home neighborhoods into the PDA, then we should have that discussion. And I'm, I'm not averse to it. But my, my question, Ethan, just to confirm the timing here, and I don't think the mayor quite asked this, but if he did, forgive me, although I was listening to the mayor, forgive me for that, Mr. Mayor. If we don't proceed with this PDA designation now, am I correct? Well, first of all, the staff report indicated, then you confirmed again, that we're looking at funding in about two years if we do proceed. But if we don't proceed with the PDA designation, but decide at a future date that we wish to seek a PDA designation for the Northgate area, must we wait four years before we can do this again?
So that, it's a good question, and it is dependent on the Plan Bay Area process. So, our understanding is that the next round of PDA nominations will be in four years. So that would be the next step if we didn't have a Northgate PDA or a Canal PDA, that would be the next iteration. That may change. We, MTC ABAG may decide that they want to do another round of nominations, but based upon how they've set up the strategic community strategy process, which is what drives this whole Plan Bay Area process, the next iteration isn't for four years, which would be when the next nomination cycle would occur.
So to be clear then, we're looking at, again, to the extent that the community wishes to move forward with a PDA that includes the Northgate area, we're looking at a cycle that could produce funding in two years if we act now, or potentially in six years if we defer this. Is that right, subject again to the caveat you provided?
There, there's an even earlier potential nomination process as well. So the, the next round of funding is in September. So, if we have a PDA eligible project, we can apply for funding at that time. Now, we may not get it that round, but the next round would be 2022. And then the next round would likely be 2026, yeah.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good question. I'll ask if, for public comment at this point. Anyone from the public wish to address this?
So if you're participating by telephone and you wish to provide public comment, please press star nine. Let us know you'd like to speak. You'll be notified that you've been unmuted, and you'll have two minutes to speak. Additionally, if you're providing public comment over YouTube, I suggest that you do that now. I also just want to remind everyone on YouTube that you let us know you want your, your comments read into the record by writing public comment prior to your comments. That way, we know that you're not just chatting in the chat. I do see one speaker.
Good evening. This is Bill Carney with Sustainable San Rafael. Yeah, both the, of these neighborhoods, the Canal and Northgate, deserve the kind of community-based and no strings attached planning that the PDA designation supports. It's time that these neighborhoods have the same kind of attention and investment that downtown has enjoyed. There are critical climate change issues, transportation, housing, and displacement issues to address. So as the city faces years of rebuilding its tax base, we need to turn over every stone to bring in outside financial resources to keep effective planning going. So the letter of interest to apply for PDA status for both the Canal area and the Northgate area provides an excellent first step, and we urge your approval. I'd also add that we would welcome the inclusion of Spinnaker and Bay Point in the Canal area and also in the Northgate area. The areas immediately to the west and north of the Civic Center smart station that also were, were discussed, all in the spirit of coming up with the most comprehensive planning approach to these critical parts of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else?
I'm moving to our YouTube comments. I see no other callers at this moment.
So no comments, we move on?
No, sorry. We have plenty of YouTube comments.
Oh, okay.
Resident of Terolinda, North Centerfell, PDA outreach has been limited and not extensive. 96 participants for both PDA considerations is limited at best. Pushing Northgate PDA through is rushed and not bedded with the community. Positive comments have been communicated while negatives have been suppressed. Continuing with my last comment, I recommend further discussion on negatives before the resolution is put up for votes. Name withheld. I'm in favor of, of a major, of a redevelopment effort in Northgate, including housing, eliminating part of the mall, et cetera. However, I do not believe we need a PDA in order to do this. PDA is merely bringing in outside money to pay for outside consultants to develop plans for outside development interests. We pay tax dollars for community planners and economic development people who should be able to oversee this without outside interference. The city can hire its own planning firm regarding Terolinda. Last PDA in 2013, $525,000 was spent on our behalf by MTC ABAG and did not generate one useful concept or drawing. It just rubber stamps justification for four to five-story housing. Name withheld. Please support the PDA for Northgate area. Terolinda is sorely in need of a comprehensive plan, especially the Northgate area. As a Terolinda resident, I support the PDA. Why wait? Terolinda has waited long enough to get proper planning. My name is Shirley Fisher, and I live in Terolinda. I fully support the council adopting the Northgate PDA resolution. A precise plan will allow implementation of NS North Centerfell vision. The answer to FAQ were professional, concise, yet thorough. Kudos to staff. Name withheld. Do not use the PDA for more housing specifically in the Canal area. It is already overpopulated, leading to multiple public health concerns and exacerbates the already scarce resources. Use the PDA in the Canal area to develop community parks, address the parking issues, expand the community clinic, and address the social inequities. Spinnaker and Bay Point want to be included in the PDA, but don't want to send their children to Bahia Vista. Seems like y'all only want, want to end with the Canal when they're getting help developing the area, the area. Can the Canal PDA please include the development of a plaza, community park, and facilities to help it, to help address social inequities? I'm a resident, name withheld. I'm a resident of Terolinda and support the PDA process. A thoughtful community plan is needed for our area. The mall is suffering greatly in the current COVID environment. Please do not delay the PDA. I participated in the community meetings. They were extremely professional. I support the PDA. The follow-up was very professional. Staff were very responsive. Please do not react out of fear. We welcome the PDA community process. I am David Smith from Terolinda. At the outreach meetings, it was said that the LOI did not commit the city to plan imposed by, to a plan imposed by another agency. There seems to be no downside. David Smith from Terolinda. The only downside seems to be delaying the LOI for the PDA. The opposition for the PDA seems to be from people who want nothing to change. But we need a plan for this area. We've waited much too long for an overall plan. Would staff please reiterate how much the process has changed from 2013 to reassure folks who oppose the process? Name withheld. I'm in favor of the North Centerfell PDA. My name is Eric Bolus, resident of Terolinda. I am in support of North Centerfell PDA as recommended by staff. We need a comprehensive plan for the Northgate area, and the PDA supports that. I'm Nimalan Mahendran, resident of Terolinda. The PDA provides funding and support for a comprehensive plan. There's no downside. I strongly support the PDA. I strongly support the PDA. It is a community-driven process. If we decide through the process that dense housing is part of the plan for the community, then so be it. Kudos on outreach. Name withheld. Please support the PDA for North Centerfell. Dave Von Filio, I support the Canal PDA, but don't understand why Bay Point Spinnakers are excluded. We are surrounded by either the Bay or the PDA. What happens in East Centerfell affects, affects us all. Name withheld. Will a PDA help protect us from new state legislation coming down the pike to remove local authority for height limitations and sequel provisions? Name withheld. Will the upcoming RH Rena calculations likely have increases for Centerfell due to local support for priority development areas, and that Centerfell will have three? Name withheld. Please approve the PDAs for North Centerfell and Canal. Both need areas, both need areas and needs an integrated plan. Name withheld. I approve PDA for Northgate area, but am against Costco. Please have further discussion on this area. We need housing and not big box stores. I am a resident of Terolinda. And there's a comment that's currently coming in to complete someone's thought, so I'm just going to wait one moment and allow that thought to be completed.
Okay.
Public comments, name withheld. Opinions have changed dramatically since the debates around the old station area plan in 2013. The need is to finally realize the town center we have been calling for. Yes to the PDA. Name withheld. I'm a 20-year Terolinda, I'm a 20-year Terolinda resident, and I support the PDA. We need comprehensive, well-thought-out planning in our area. And these comments are coming in. And these comments are coming in as I speak, so I'm just going to give them a few minutes to be able to submit them. And I'll check the phones and see if there's anyone on the telephone who wishes to provide public comment while we're waiting for YouTube comments, please press star nine. Star nine. There was a... A name withheld. I'm watching and not everyone's comment was included. Not everyone was included. And there's more coming. Please acknowledge that the residents are not in agreeance. I do see a hand raised. Did someone just receive?
Hello?
Yes, you're welcome to speak.
Yeah, hi, this is Greg Nell. And I didn't want to withhold my name. I guess I did something wrong. But like Shirley, we've been working on this for 30 years. And things have really changed. People with the, with the decline of retail and the total changing nature of retail, it's really time to address the town center that we've been promised and we've been talking about for that whole time. And nobody's opinions are being suppressed. It's just that people have actually really changed their mind. Everywhere I go, people understand the need to fund real planning and, and create a town center for North Centerfell. And it's, it's really a positive thing, and nobody's trying to suppress any negatives about the idea. It's just that this is not 2013. The people are really excited about what we're talking about here. So I'd urge you, fellows and women, to please vote yes on the North Centerfell and the Canal PDA. I think it's a tremendous opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you. I was like, why is everyone waving at me? Hello to all of you as well. I just wanted to read, Pam Reeves did submit a comment that states people don't realize they must type the words "public comments." And I just wanted to note that that is correct. There are some comments where people are not writing public comments. Again, as I mentioned previously, if they don't write public comment, we won't read them into the record. Additionally, we're not reading in YouTube account usernames as the people's names, so they have to introduce themselves if they'd like their name included in the record. And we've also provided some examples in the chat. We can post that again in a moment as well. And that, that does conclude public comment.
Well, thank you so much. Quite, quite a few comments and a challenging topic. It's not intuitive in many ways, so I appreciate the input from so many. Comments regarding this item, questions of staff? I have a quick question out of curiosity. It's not a fair question. I'm going to ask it anyway. A comment has been made that the negatives have been suppressed. Ethan or Paul or anybody else have any knowledge of that?
We have not moderated any of the public commenting sites, any of the social media posts, and we have included in the correspondence every comment that we received since May 18th. We haven't tried to do anything.
I would offer that we probably had more comments over the last 15, 20 minutes than vast majority of the issues we approach. And, and so certainly that's, that's appreciated. It also indicates to me quite a lot of community interest in this matter. And by the questions and your response to the question on the 57 comments, knowledgeable and aware, I would suggest, community with regard to this matter. Questions, observations, perhaps a motion?
Well, I'll make an observation that the planning staff has done a great job of putting the FAQs. I don't know if you've gone back to look at those, but I know we had them before back in 2013, and you evolved them to reflect where we are today, and we're really thorough. And even though you had all that, I did attend two of the meetings, the virtual meetings, and you still answered the questions, and then you would say, hey, you can go to that. So I agree that we need to be looking to the future of what we want to do in both of these areas. And I appreciated the suggestion that someone made that, you know, the city staff should do it, but unfortunately, that's not what planning looks like in local government. It actually, we always go outside and have the work be done because it's so extensive. Precise planning takes specific skills. Not that you and Ethan Paul probably couldn't do it in a pinch, but really, that is why we work with firms to do that. And I want us to be proactive in these areas. We've talked about many of the comments we received tonight and that we received written, where both of these areas could use more attention in the future and in the years to come. And this is one way to have the community conversation. So what kind of development do we want that would reflect our values there? And this is how we get at it. And I know that if we move down this path to the mayor's earlier questions, if we decide it's not working, it's not the right thing for the city of Centerfell, we'd be able to rescind the PDA. But at this point, there is no risk to this, and we need to be moving forward for our community and, and putting in the letter of interest. So those are my comments, and I would make a motion. I don't have that piece of paper. I will print it out next time.
Thank you for your comments. I'll, I'll just add that I appreciate and agree with what you've just said. The, the issue of PDA is, is kind of an interesting animal because it's changed its complexion considerably. In fact, I voted against the PDA. It was previously presented to us in the Northgate area. I changed my position on that because I think it has evolved to something different. And I now equate PDA with planning, and certainly in both of the areas we're addressing this evening, Canal and, Canal and Northgate, I think, certainly I would, and I suspect most, I'm going to say, would agree that we need some, some significant planning in these two particular areas of our, of our town. And this will give us the opportunity. And make no mistake about it, without the funding that's being offered, if we go down this path, the planning will not take place. The city does not have funding, and it won't take place. And I would suggest that's not the best way for us to, to develop for our future. So I will be in favor of this matter once we have a motion. And Councilmember Bushy looks like she's anxious for a comment or motion.
Both.
Oh, good.
First, I, first I will start with, with the comment. Fresh out of the 2040, that's a 2040 general plan, it's a big number, where we, where we saw firsthand what the precise plan can do for us. I am very excited to look forward to what additional resources we can bring to these two, these two areas in our city to have that same level of creativity and expansive opportunities for our, as a mayor put it, knowledgeable and involved citizens. So we've got a great group of people interested in this topic. I hope we can carry this enthusiasm through as we gather the resources to take, take us to the next level in planning. All of that said, I am, let's see, ready to, I, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the submittal of a letter of interest nominating the Northgate and Southeast San Rafael slash Canal neighborhoods as priority development areas as part of the Plan Bay Area 2050 program.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second?
Moving second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
I'm Atticus Carius IV Z with one absence. It's too bad John wasn't here because this is his area as well, and we've had a lot to add, I know. But we have concluded, therefore, I'd like to take about a five-minute break. Some of us have been at this since six o'clock, so. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, if everyone could.
Five-minute break.
Yep, that sounds great. We'll be back in five minutes. If we could all just keep muted and have our cameras off.
Yep, that sounds great. We'll be back in five minutes. If we could all just keep muted and have our cameras off.
Thank you. We're returning from a short break from the San Rafael City Council meeting of Monday, June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. And we will now turn to Agenda Item five B, Final Citywide Proposed Budget for Two Thousand and Twenty One and legal spending limit. Is there a staff report regarding this item? Thank you.
Yes.
Evening.
Hi Mayor, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Okay. So, thank you very much. Good evening Mayor and council members. Tonight, we are going to go over the fiscal year two thousand and twenty one operating and CIP budget. We've already reviewed the CIP budget as of the prior meeting, so we will not be going into much detail on that. Before I dive in, I would like to acknowledge what devastating times our nation has been enduring. We have heard the reoccurring themes throughout the night and we'll hear them again throughout this report. These are dark times and together we're focused on coming out of them better. That said, this will take time and should you approve the budget before you tonight, it's understood there will continue to be changes to it as our policies, goals, and objectives for the year are further developed. Generally, a normal budget cycle takes months to pull together. Discussions start in late January, priorities, projects, and objectives are set. And then it's more discussions than analysis about how we fund our daily operation and also make room for the new and innovative objectives that will move us forward. With that, you can surely imagine how much more difficult it was this time around as it was not a normal budget cycle. It hasn't been a normal anything lately. In mid-March, when the potential impacts of COVID nineteen pandemic started unfolding, city management froze open positions and all non-essential spending. In early May, we came to you with projected revenue losses of approximately twelve million dollars due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and an extensive plan to follow in late May that communicated the city's recommendations and actions towards recovery. As the weeks passed and our departments had to update their budget plans, we talked about cuts, priority shifts, program and service constraints, and reimagining status quo. More recently, we've engaged in further social and racial justice and equity conversations that will result in action. I'm proud of the way our San Rafael city team pulls together in good times and bad. It's not just the line staff or the management team or certain departments, it's across the board. It's our union boards, our city employees, progressive management, and you, Mayor and council members. So, let me take a moment to thank you all, thank our leaders, Jim and Christine, our adaptable and innovative directors and budget managers, and the finance team, specifically Von Bach for her operational organization, patience and knowledge, and Sean Plague for being our invaluable right-hand person, which is hard to do for just one of us, let alone both of us. So, as we move into this presentation, I'd like to give you a preview of what we'll be going over tonight. Fiscal year nineteen twenty budget status update as of April. Fiscal year two thousand and twenty one proposed citywide operating budget. The fiscal year two thousand and twenty one appropriations limit and a recommendation to approve the budget. All of these items have been taken to the Public Finance Committee meetings on numerous occasions, so they have already been reviewed by those individuals and labor groups. As far as the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget status, we came to you on February, February third of two thousand and twenty with a mid-year update saying we were doing really well and we were asking for an increase in revenues for sales tax of two hundred thousand dollars and an associated increase in overtime of two hundred thousand dollars as well. So, we did not think that we were going to have any issues closing out the year. Unfortunately, things quickly and drastically changed soon after as the COVID nineteen pandemic hit. In respect to revenues, there are still many unknowns, but as of now, we expect that we'll have an overall loss of approximately five million dollars, which is a six point three percent reduction, and this is just over a matter of three and a half months. Sales tax and use tax are expected to decline by about three point seven million, which is approximately eleven percent, approximately eleven percent decrease from the original budget. Transient occupancy tax is expected to decrease. This is expected to decrease by about eight hundred thousand, which is approximately twenty five percent. For the last several months, there have been no individuals staying in hotels. And most other revenue line items were impacted as well, such as planning and permitting fees, franchise fees, investment fees, and others. As we've mentioned before, economists are predicting cities such as San Rafael, who are heavily reliant on sales tax, use tax, and transient occupancy tax, will endure the hardest financial hit. In terms of expenses, we're projecting a decrease of expenses in a total of approximately three point five percent. I won't be satisfied with this percentage until sometime in late August when the books are closed and all expenses have been posted, but an estimate for now will do. These are primarily savings from salary, benefit, and retirement costs. This is a result of already frozen positions and non-essential expenses that we immediately froze when the pandemic hit. We're projecting a one-time reduction in overtime as public safety is now not taking vacation as a result of the pandemic and therefore no one has to fill in their shift on overtime. And we also had employees who either resigned or retired towards the end of fiscal year nineteen or during this year, fiscal year twenty. And for those positions that were hired, some of them, the pensions here normally changed, usually changed from classic to pepper, which results in a lower pension cost. So, in summary, for fiscal year nineteen twenty, we're currently projecting a net loss of two point eight five million, of which two point one million will be offset by the use of one-time funds and assigned balances from prior years. Again, I'd like to reemphasize that these are one-time funds, so once these are used, we will no longer have any unassigned one-time funds available. And unfortunately, even after the use of two point one million in one-time funds, we will have to move into our general reserves for the remaining seven hundred twenty one thousand to balance this budget. For other funds, we're seeing the impacts of COVID nineteen as well, and especially for the funds that are reliant on sales tax revenues, such as gas tax and Measure A. Additionally, the Recreation Fund, which currently receives a two million dollar contribution from the General Fund, is expected to need an additional transfer due to revenues lost as a result of having to refund fees for canceled recreation programs while still utilizing staff for other operations, such as disaster service workers. And any required adjustments for these funds will be presented as part of our year-end update. In regards to what the rest of fiscal year nineteen twenty looks like, we will have final numbers in August or September, and so we will come to you and report on those unaudited financials. And by the time November, December twenty twenty rolls around, we will have our year-end financials and audit reports completed, and we will be able to present those to you as well. So, moving into the meat of things, which is the proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty twenty one. First, I'd like to start out with the citywide budget. And if you look at Exhibit One in your staff report detail, you should see all of the details that this encompasses. But I wanted to put it in a summary format for you so we could hit upon the most important items. So, what this chart shows is sources, which are revenues and transfers, and uses, which are expenses and transfers. So, for the General Fund, you can see here that the uses exceed the sources. This is normally not something that we would want unless we have plans of balancing the budget in some other manner. We'll dive into the General Fund into much more detail after this slide, but the fact that our uses are exceeding our sources is not usually a good thing. Next, the General Plan, you can see that our uses are also exceeding sources, and that's normally okay. So, with the General Plan, what happens is we'll save a bunch, and the General Plan is funded based on a portion of revenues from permit activity. And we'll save, 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 and then when it comes down, when it comes time to working on the General Plan, we'll spend until the plan is done, and then we'll continue that cycle again to save. We are currently in the middle of a General Plan, which is why you see the increase in expenses. For our special revenue grant and trust funds, these are mostly restricted in nature, so they cannot be used towards General Fund operations. The reason that our uses are higher than sources here is primarily due to gas tax projects. So, we are going to be incurring expenses for these projects, but we've received the revenues in prior years. They're already sitting in that fund balance, but you just don't see them as part of sources and revenues. Our Enterprise Parking Fund is pretty much break even, it should be flat. Our Internal Service and Capital Replacement Fund is costing us more than we actually charge the General Fund. So, all of these funds are our internal services, which includes vehicle purchases, workers' comp claims, general liability, our pension obligation bond, computer purchases, safety equipment purchases, and maintenance of our own city-owned property. I would like to see this not exceed sources, but in some instances it will. This might be a year in which, you know, our cars are, the time that they're placed in service, they're ready to be disposed of, things like that. Or our computers have been around for seven years, eight years, and so those need to be replaced. But as part of our cost-cutting measures, we are looking to, and we did work to decrease this number. And so, in total, we have sources of a hundred and ten million and uses of a hundred and twenty eight million, of which some of those uses are previous fund balance amounts that we will be able to use. So, if there's anything that I would want you to take away with you tonight, it would be these next two slides as I try to sum up the main points of the General Fund budget for two thousand and twenty one. First, the General Fund is projected to lose approximately nine million dollars. With this, this is something we brought to you a few months ago. It's remained the same number pretty much, and we have identified certain expenses that we need to cut. So, what we've already done is reduce expenses by one point four million dollars for current frozen positions. We recently approved the voluntary retirement separation applications, and that came out to about five hundred eighty six thousand dollars in savings. In effect of July first, two thousand and twenty, we will have furlough days, and those approximate to about seven hundred thousand dollars. For most of us, they will be thirteen days throughout the year that employees will not be working, the city hall will be closed, and we will receive a benefit of about seven hundred thousand. And then additionally, we have cuts, department cuts, of four million dollars. Staff recommends using those emergency reserves of two point two million to balance the budget as all of the cuts that I talked about earlier amount to six point seven million, and therefore will still need assistance in order to cover the losses of almost nine million dollars. Every department is reducing their expenses to collectively come up to the four million dollar reduction goal. However, further position eliminations, such as layoffs, will be brought forward at subsequent meetings as we're still reviewing those. So, with the frozen positions and voluntary retirement plan separation, we've reduced the city's workforce from an FTE of four hundred five point seven three to three hundred eighty two point seven three. So, that headcount is about twenty three full-time equivalents worth. And with that, of course, you can imagine that we would have city services that are going to be impacted. Just to name a few, this is not a conclusive list, but just to name a few. Reduced over-the-counter hours, greater wait times for customer service, reduced recreation programs and/or community or library hours, and reduced capital improvement projects, as you saw during our CIP presentation. Again, there's a lot more here, but these are some of the programs that will be impacted and some of the services. As mentioned earlier, staff will return much more often than we have in the past to highlight changes and update the budget. So, let's dig into some of these. General Fund revenues, while almost all fees are affected during this recessionary period, property taxes, which is our second highest revenue generating item, are expected to remain strong, and in fact, we'll see an increase of a little bit over four percent. However, as this recessionary period continues, we'll be keeping a close watch on home prices. If sales start to dip, we'll see a negative effect on the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two property tax revenues. Our shared services agreements and vehicle license fees are also expected to increase by a range of two to seven percent, which equates to about three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Unfortunately, we are expecting to see a large decrease in sales tax by approximately fifteen percent, or five point two million. The sales and use tax number is different than the one that I was talking about earlier for fiscal year nineteen twenty. This is standalone fiscal year two thousand and twenty one sales tax estimate of the declines that we'll be seeing. There is a huge lag in receiving sales tax numbers, so for example, we won't have preliminary April revenues for sales tax until about two weeks from now, which makes us very hard to project and forecast. But we work with one of the experts in the field, which is HDL, and we've talked to them and looked at a ton of different analysis and have done our own based on where we think that sales tax revenues are going to go. And fifteen percent is pretty much in line with what they have been seeing for the city of San Rafael and also what we've been seeing as part of our other review and analysis. So, we also expect to see decreases in revenues in most other areas. This is a huge range, it's about one to ten percent, and it's much smaller dollar amounts, but unfortunately, we are seeing that. And then they're in the areas of permits, licensing, development fees, plan review fees, business licenses. As we expect incomes to, disposable incomes, to potentially decline, and therefore, a lot of this won't be done. And looking at the General Fund expenses, as I mentioned earlier, we need almost nine million dollars to offset our deficit, and staff has made reductions totaling six point seven million. This includes the seven hundred K related to furloughs, one point four million included to frozen positions, five hundred eighty six thousand related to voluntary retirements, and department cuts of four million. The department's cuts, the department cuts of four million are under review and will dictate further position eliminations such as layoffs. While several cost-saving measures are set in place, increasing costs are also included in the budget. Most notably, increases in compensation based on contract commitments, an increase in pension expense based on SARA's updated contribution rate, and the increase in the debt service as the Public Safety Center is expected to be placed in service in the fall. So, all of these are pretty much out of our control and will take place in this budget, so they've increased expenses. And on top of that, as we've said in previous years, our city goals remain unfunded. So, although we were able to make headway in previous years, we still had a lot of goals that we wanted to fulfill and fund, and this is only setting us back unfortunately. Pension and expenses are approximately fifteen percent of total citywide budget or twenty percent of the General Fund, which is about sixteen point three million. So, normally, our General Fund emergency reserves, the policy that was adopted in two thousand and fourteen says we must maintain a ten percent reserve of that year's expenditures. So, normally, we would be adding to this reserve fund. We currently have seven point nine million, and based on the way that fiscal year nineteen twenty looks like it's ending up, we believe that we'll need seven hundred twenty one thousand, or a little bit more than that, and therefore will fall to nine percent and about, a little bit over seven million dollars in the fund. As a result of our estimated losses and after six point seven million of cost reductions for fiscal year two thousand and twenty one, we're expecting to still need two point two million of emergency reserve fund balances. And this will, this should hopefully balance the budget, but it will leave our emergency reserve at six point three percent, or four point nine million. Best practice is seventeen percent. We have yet to get there, but it is in our goal. So, what's next? Staff plans on returning to you to present a position elimination plan. We are focused on reopening the local economy and enhancing business efforts, which will increase revenues. We have been and will continue to be in collaboration with the county in all of Marin cities and towns to evaluate opportunities for savings that include shared service agreements and consolidation efforts. There is also a document in the staff report that lists all of our current shared services agreements, and there's a lot in there. It's many pages, so I encourage you to take a look at that. We will continue to explore and gauge community interest and other revenue-generating possibilities. We must focus on building the emergency reserve backup as we're gonna need it in times of emergency. And most important, the budget will be updated based on policies, goals, and objectives which are being developed. Take a look at other funds, which again, Exhibit One will show you all of our other funds, and I've summarized and picked out just some of the main ones that include operational activity. Our Emergency Medical Services Fund, this is what we often refer to as the Paramedic Tax Fund. This funds a portion of our firefighters, so for that piece, you don't see it in the General Fund, which is Exhibit Two. In total, fire is approximately thirty million dollars in expenses, but because we have two different funds that fund that, they're shown separately. So, we recently increased this parcel tax, it was approved on June first and will be shown in next year's budget. So we recently increased this parcel tax, it was approved on June first and will be shown in next year's budget, fiscal year twenty twenty-one. The capital projects funds, these are a, a bunch of funds that are mainly for capital projects and include some operations. And that was presented to you on May eighteenth and we're asking you for approval of the capital improvement plan. Measure A funds, which is primarily open space and park maintenance. So this, the measure A funding is expected to decrease to, it's normally in the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar range and we expect it to decrease to about three hundred sixty-five thousand because it is funded by sales tax and therefore we see it decreasing. Measure D, which is the library parcel tax, this is the fourth year and we recently had a consent item on the agenda for an annual CPI increase. Measure C, this is a new measure, it's the Marin wildfire prevention, prevention measure. Uh fiscal year twenty twenty-one will be the first year of this new tax and it has authority for ten years. The really important thing that I'd like to point out in this one, from a financial standpoint, is the funding cannot be supplanted with current and ongoing expenditures. It must be used for new improved and expedited services for the prevention of wildfire. So that's a really important note there. Parking enterprise fund, so that is our um parking fund, which will remain self-sufficient. Community services, recreation, this is the one that I had mentioned earlier where there is a contribution of two million dollars, sorry, I need to turn my light on, two million dollars annually, but um they're seeing decreases in revenues, of course, so they will also, that department will also have to decrease expenses accordingly. And then community services, childcare and preschool. They have a fund balance that um is fairly healthy at the moment and it could take on some losses, but not for too long, so we want to make sure that we're back on track here. As far as staffing goes, for fiscal year nineteen twenty, we are requesting the addition of two new positions and the reduction of one and a half positions. The two new positions that we are requesting is a school resource officer and an open space ranger. Both these positions are externally funded, which means there is no city money that's going to them. The school resource officer is funded by state grants and it's a, it's been a request by the school that we have another resource officer there. And the open space ranger is funded by our new measure C funding. Given the frozen positions and VRSP, this leaves us with a workforce of approximately three hundred eighty-two point seven three, which is a twenty-three FTE reduction. And then lastly, for staffing, we will not be hiring approximately a hundred and twenty-seven temp and seasonal positions as a result of the reduction in programs and the restrictions uh due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And then, we are asking for GAN appropriations to be approved. The new calculated limit is one hundred and forty-three million dollars. The appropriations subject to the limit are about seventy-four million dollars and that leaves us with a lot of room under the legal limit of about seventy million dollars. With that, our recommended actions are to adopt a budget approving the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget, including the capital plan and adopting a resolution approving the GAN appropriations limit. And I will turn it over for questions.
Well, what an outstanding report and thanks so much. Uh, this is a very unusual year, we all know that and without uh without your guidance, we would be totally lost, I would suggest. Uh, at least we know where we're at. For not to be, not to be, but we are where we're at and uh, and thanks for sharing uh all of your expertise to uh enlighten us, so, so thank you so much. Before public comment, uh council members, uh comments on the presentation, questions on the presentation. Okay? Doesn't appear, therefore I'll ask if there's any public uh comment.
Yeah, if you're participating by telephone and you wish to provide public comment over the phone, please press star nine. And if you are on YouTube and you wish to provide public comment, I'm just gonna do a quick reminder, if you want your comments right into the record out loud by me, uh you will want to write public comment in advance of your comment and also please let us know who you are. I see a couple of um telephone numbers and speakers, give me one moment.
If they call you first. Hi there. Hi, um so my name is Jill Harris and I work, I'm a city employee, I work at the downtown library. I'm also a resident of San Rafael. Um, I urge the council to reject the proposed twenty twenty-one budget. White people here in San Rafael and all over the US are finally waking up in mass numbers to systemic white supremacy, particularly in policing. It is a time of listening and learning for all of us, but it's not enough to read a book or post a photo on social media. If we don't take action, all the introspection in the world means nothing. I urge you to take action today, reject this budget and commit to sincerely examining and defunding SRPD. Reinvest in city departments that can more effectively address the needs of the most vulnerable in our community. When there are budget cuts, like now, um why is PD's contract non-negotiable but social services like the library, housing, homelessness, recreation, and others are up for grabs? We have the staff and organizational infrastructure to move the needle on the issues that most deeply impact our community. If you choose to expand, fund, and support our own social services, reject this budget, defund police. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Any others?
Yeah, good evening. Uh, my name's Matthew Spiegel. I'm a twenty-four-year-old lifelong resident of San Rafael. Uh, I just wanted to add one more voice to the many comments we've heard tonight urging the, the council to reject this budget um for that coming year and reduce funding to the police department. Um, at the very beginning of uh this meeting, we heard from Police Chief Bishop. And, and she herself described how the police has taken on a number of roles that they were really never intended to perform. Uh, and all the while, social services have been defunded. And she actually said that she was in favor of transferring those responsibilities to other agencies, which I think is pretty remarkable. Um, if I, I, if I'm reading the, the, all the relevant documents correctly, I think the proposed police budget for the upcoming year has actually been increased by ninety-three thousand dollars over the last year. And I think that sends uh the absolute wrong message about what the city's priorities are. Um, especially when viewed in conjunction with um just symbolically with the massive and sort of uh vaguely threatening public safety center that's gonna be opening soon in downtown. Uh, so just want to urge the city council not to let this moment in American history pass without seriously considering defunding the police department and moving funds into social services. Um, you should, you should reject the proposed budget and direct staff to return with a plan that addresses the demand of the Black Lives Matter movement. Thank you.
The comment, anyone else?
I'm muted. I'm going to move over to our YouTube comments. Irene Langlamay, West End, San Rafael resident. I am sorry for being late to the meeting online. I noticed some comments regarding SRPD. People want to defund it. I say no. The police are doing a good job. Leave them alone.
My name is Ada Ruiz from San Rafael. One hundredth of fifth graders in San Rafael City Schools District can't read at the level they're supposed to and San Rafael Police Department gets an increase in budget. That's the problem. The lack of financial support from the city council to our schools is the problem, not just the problem, but embarrassing. That's just one of the social issues the city council fails to address. Reforms do not work. Widespread reforms occurred after Ferguson and here we are again. Please understand this, your sense of security is the reason communities of color live in terror. To defund the police and invest in communities. City council has been defunding education, but thinks defunding the police is radical. Please listen and defund the police and invest in the communities. When we create jobs, provide adequate education for our children and address social inequities that make Marin highest in racial disparities, we are a thriving city. Defund the police and Black Lives Matter. If you really stand in solidarity with Black Lives Matter, defund the police and reinvest in communities of color. Michael Reynolds, would the council be open to expanding furloughs beyond non-safety personnel? COVID will require tougher decisions than we are used to.
I'm gonna give another moment for additional comments. I see another telephone call.
Hi, yeah, my name is Brian Duncan and I'm a resident of San Rafael. I'm here today to urge the council to reject the pros, uh proposed twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget staff report. Um, just to add my voice um to some of the comments that have already been uh said here. Uh, we're living in an important moment in our country and in our history, a time where many of us feel charged and hopeful the meaningful change against uh systemic racism will actually happen. Um, but as Black activist and comic W Kamau Bell stated in an interview recently, we can only be hopeful as long as we do the work. And the proposed budget report is not doing the work. If anything, it's an anticlimax for the moment we're in by cutting funds to departments that have the greatest positive impact on communities of color and making no cuts to the police department, which has questionable to negative impact for these communities. In short, it clings to the problematic status quo. I recognize that drastic cuts are unavoidable in the ongoing COVID crisis, but where the cuts are landing speaks volumes to the city's priorities more so than statements of solidarity. Are we honestly saying there's no reevaluation of the budget needed in light of the current events? Um, how can the council say we will create better outcomes for communities of color while disproportionately cutting the services used by those very communities? It doesn't add up. The task force is one thing, but transparency timeline and accountability for such a task force is murky and provides too much wiggle room. The world is watching. Cities across the United States are reevaluating what public safety means for them. This is a chance to put the money where your mouth is. I respectfully urge the council to back up their statement of solidarity with meaningful and immediate action and reject the proposed staff report.
Hi, uh, my name is Jennifer Giddon-Daly and I live in Tallalinda. Cities and towns across the country are reconsidering their police budget, but not in San Rafael. The police budget presented in tonight's proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-one citywide, citywide budget is a carbon copy of last year's budget and a rubber stamp on the way our city has always policed. The police department has allocated a shocking thirty-one percent of total general fund expenditures, higher than any other department, including the fire department, and unchanged from fiscal year nineteen twenty budget as a percentage of total general fund expenditures. The proposed COVID nineteen cost-cutting measures include hiring freezes and furloughs for non-public safety employees only, meaning the police permit is spared. With a bleak financial forecast for the city of San Rafael and the current social justice environment, why aren't we taking a harder look at the police department budget? Both Mayor Phillips and Police Chief Bishop have marched the local protesters and tonight reaffirm their commitment to reviewing and updating the police department's policies. That is not enough. You must take action. Dr. Angela Davis said, "It's not enough to be non-racist, we must be anti-racist." So I'm asking you, members of the council, to be anti-racist and take action. Don't just rubber stamp the same police budget as last year. Systematic racism is hard to change and doesn't happen overnight. But you can take the first step toward meaningful change, not just promises, by not approving the police budget. Tell the city to go back and rethink their police budget, which will force them to follow through on their work and actually rethink how we police.
Now I see no more callers. And there are no additional public comments on YouTube and that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, return to council for comment, question, motion.
Hi, Mayor, sorry, but would it be appropriate for me to address some of the questions as part of public comments?
Uh, certainly it uh, it uh would be appreciated, yes.
Okay.
If you're interested in your comments, so please offer them.
Just from a financial perspective, just.
No, I understand.
So I heard some discussions about school board and just to make sure everyone understands, the school budgets are controlled by the school board, not the city of San Rafael. We too would love for schools to get additional funding and hopefully the state has that as part of their initiatives, which then goes down to the school board. Um, twenty-four million dollars has been allocated to the police department and of that twenty-four million dollars, they had taken a two point eight percent reduction. And then there, they did have contract negotiations that were agreed to in twenty nineteen. And so that increased the expense, but they absolutely took reductions and they were about two point eight percent, which uh is approximately seven hundred thousand dollars. Additionally, when we talk about, oh, I heard someone in an earlier comment say that the PD budget was a hundred and thirty-five million dollars, but it's twenty-four million, so just wanted to set the record straight on that. Additionally, when we talk about the general fund budget, police is funded primarily by the general fund, but other departments are not. So for example, fire is funded partly by the general fund and partly by the paramedic tax. Their total expenditures are about thirty million dollars, so that's a little bit higher than police. Uh, Department of Public Works is another good example. They're funded by lots of different funds and if we just look at their operational expenses, the budget for that is about sixteen point five million. So it's hard to just look at the general fund number and compare that to all other departments. And then lastly, the um twenty point seven million dollars that someone had asked about in salaries, that is related to wages, pension costs, overtime costs, health benefits, um temp help. So all of the different personnel expenditures that they have incurred and that's where that twenty point seven million comes from.
Excellent points and thanks for uh, for adding, uh adding those. Uh, I'm particularly uh, you know, say somewhat surprised uh by the comment regarding the education. Uh, I was on a school board for eight years in this community and I thought most were aware that it was, you know, a separate, uh, separate entity, if you will, and funded separately and certainly not part of our, our effort. Uh, with regard to uh some of the comments on the budget pertaining to the police uh department, uh earlier I stated that uh, that I thought that it would be appropriate for us to uh, as step two or stage two, after we review current policies and practices, to look at uh some ways that we might better serve as the chief has suggested. Uh, some of our population now is being addressed by the police department, maybe not uh, maybe not the most effective way, uh and maybe this is an area that's evolving and I did suggest that we'll take a look at that once we get through policies and practices. Uh, now would not be the time, since we don't have policies or don't have uh programs in mind, uh just an arbitrary shift, uh it wouldn't accomplish uh very much in and of itself. Uh, we have to know what we're doing. Uh, provide some of the services that uh might otherwise be offloaded, as again the chief has suggested and I agree upon. So now is, is not the time to do that in, in my view. Not to say we're not going to, but timing is uh, is not right at this point in time. And our other community does expect us to provide uh at least the service we're now providing, if you look at any of the surveys. Uh, our police department is highly regarded and the services provided are essential. Uh, let's face it, uh, public safety is our first charge. And uh certainly that's a very, very important element of uh that public safety. So I would not be in favor at this point in time, not to say never, but not at this point in time, make a shift without a, a specific objective in mind, makes no sense. Uh, Councilmember McCullough.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mayor. Uh, I think we've heard loud and clear from the community that business as usual cannot continue. And uh I for one agree with that. I think that we need an entire rethink of the way we go about doing our business and that includes, well, it includes public safety at its core, but other elements of the city. Unfortunately, uh as has been explained uh so well by Nadine and in the course of our prior discussions on budget issues as we've approached this moment, we're up against state law that requires us to pass a budget now. And we don't have the liberty of doing what Chief Bishop said earlier that she's prepared to do, which is engage in a dialogue with the community, with stakeholders, and to determine what services are best done by others and to transfer funds to take care of those services. So I guess what I'm saying is if we had the luxury of time and we could reimagine our police department and, and optimize its functions so that we meet the community's expectations as it relates to both the concerns about systemic racism and also the concerns about upholding public safety, then we could do that, but we don't have the luxury of time. So what I'm hoping comes out of this is we pass the budget because we have to do that. And we can't break faith with all of our stakeholders here in order to address this growing national concern. growing national concern, but let's take the time to address that concern in a thoughtful way. Again, as you alluded to earlier, Mr. Mayor, as our city manager mentioned earlier, and as Chief Bishop mentioned earlier, and out of those stakeholder meetings and efforts, let's come up with a better way. Uh, I too thi- think highly of our police department. I've never seen examples of misbehavior, but that's not what this movement is about. This movement is about something frankly higher and more insightful, and when we have our chief acknowledging that the police aren't equipped to do all that we expect them to do, then let's find a way to do it better. So with that said, I'm prepared to move forward after hearing from others in approving this budget, but with the caveat that we not miss this opportunity as the public is asking us to look closely at how we spend our money, both in the public safety realm and elsewhere, as we move forward in this new fiscal year.
Sorry about that. The Vice Mayor Collin.
Um, I wanted to thank uh Nadine for that great report. This is the second time we've looked at it. There's a lot of information, and you kept it top line, but I do encourage um our community to go online and to read um all the great work and and backup. Um, and I I want to follow on the great comments by the mayor and by Councilmember McCullough, and really uh thank everyone who called in tonight and who's watching tonight and who also emailed us about uh their desire for us to look at how uh our police is funded and a call to defund the police. Um, I want you to know that I also share this uh this desire to address the systemic racism that exists in our world and in Marin and obviously here in San Rafael. Um, I stand in solidarity with Black Lives Matter movement. Um, I went to their website for guidance because I I wanted to get more information. I wanted to see what are those action items? Um, they have an initiative called hashtag What Matters 2020, and what's really interesting about that initiative is it focuses on, and this is to Councilmember McCullough's point, the underlying issues um that uh support or or make systemic racism occur. Yes, uh, there is, um, they want to address per police brutality, but it's really um additional issues like getting people to vote in the presidential election, addressing racial injustice, looking at human rights, looking at environmental justice. So yes, there are these actions we can take very specific uh to San Rafael, to our budget, which the mayor has already committed uh to that we're going to be taking those steps, but I I also encourage people to step back and look at these bigger issues unless those underlying issues have anything to do with housing. We had a housing uh uh item on our agenda um earlier this evening. There is a correlation between housing and uh racial injustice and systemic racism. So um housing, poverty, things like that. So um I encourage the community to stay engaged in these conversations. This is a time for us to be coming together and to bring in our voices together to reflect um the values that we all share and have the solutions that we want. So um I will also be prepared to support the budget, uh, given all the aforementioned conversation we've had.
Thanks for your comment. Uh, Councilmember Bush, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, I want to compliment um Nadine on the um thorough and insightful um presentation. Um, we certainly wish the bottom line was different than it is, but it gives us confidence to have it explained to to us and set forth in such a uh understandable uh way that we can um take action on it and know going forward where we are. And I certainly look forward to your regular, well, regular updates, because I don't know if I look forward to them, they might have bad news in them, but uh to at least being thoroughly informed on um repeatedly about on how things unfold for us. Turning to the larger issues on in our budget, I absolutely support on the mayor's efforts as um uh the Vice Mayor and um Councilmember McCullough have have stated to undertake a comprehensive review of our approach to public safety and to bring forward a well-thought-out proposal to better align how we approach the police department funding with our values. If there is a proposal out there that we can pull together as a community that better puts in place a a system that expends our resources in a way that meets the needs of the community, yet maybe reorganizes um some of the services from the the police department to some other um department, then I think we should all um um embrace that and move forward with that with with the support of on of Chief Bishop. So I'm, I wish we had that comprehensive proposal now at the time we're adopting the budget, but I'm confident that we could do that in a sequential way and in a thoughtful way as the ideas come forward and we look for what works in our community, what can meet our particular needs and how we can best align our police department on with our our community's values. So I look forward to continuing discussions because this issue isn't going to go away, and those of us um in office are are committed to see it through. I too will be um supporting um the budget.
Well, thank everyone for their their comments. I think we're in exactly the same place regarding the bigger picture and and how we're going to go about addressing that. Um, so it's it's comforting to hear your comments, and I I certainly appreciate uh them, as I am certain our community does. Having said that, we have a matter before us, and a motion would be appropriate. Councilmember McCullough.
Yeah, I move that we uh adopt the resolution approving the budget, the CIP for twenty-twenty-one, and providing for the appropriations expenditures set forth in the budget in the amount of a hundred and twenty-seven million, nine forty-three, nine thirteen.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Move in second row, call please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Uh, aye, and the matter carries four zero with uh one absent.
If I could also, I move that we adopt the resolution approving the twenty-twenty-one GAN appropriations, limiting it to a hundred and forty-three million, two hundred and eight, nine oh nine.
Second.
Move in second row, call please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Aye, and that too carries four um four zero and and um at one absent. We'll now turn to the the final item, which is a public opinion poll survey results. Potential local sales tax ballot measure seems appropriate under the circumstances.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Christina Lilovich. I'm the Assistant City Manager, and I am going to just briefly introduce this item and then turn it over to Brian Godby to um present the survey results. The purpose of tonight's um presentation is to share the survey results from a recent public opinion poll that was done this past May. Just to set the context for you, I wanted to remind you that in the city's uh COVID Economic Recovery Plan, we outline various recovery strategies that we're implementing to maintain current service levels. And in short, we need to do two things. We need to both reduce expenses and look for new um revenue sources. So you've heard extensively from Nadine tonight in the budget presentation about the significant budget reductions and uh expense reductions that we're making to balance the budget. Um, and we felt like it was prudent and important to move forward with assessing how the community might feel about a potential revenue tax measure on the ballot um for this coming fall. So we've hired Brian Godby with Godby Research and Trials Heath with TBWBH Props and Measures to help us with that, who've worked with us in the past. And I'm going to turn it over to Brian now. It looks like we've already gotten to our shared screen with him to go over the survey results.
Brian, if I may, I'm sorry you've got the your format for your PowerPoint presentation. While it's very clear to everyone on Zoom, those watching on YouTube, it's going to be much har- much more difficult to read. Um, I'm going to go ahead, if you don't mind, and take over screen share and do the presentation myself, so it'll be larger screen.
Uh, sure. No problem.
One moment.
Let me know when you're ready.
Attempted to say with mute on. Uh, Brian, welcome. Uh, we're uh we're sorry it's a little bit late. Uh, we had some matters we had to cover this evening, and we're glad we're at this point. Uh, uh, thank you for helping us with this issue.
Sure, no worries. All right, are we ready to go, uh, Lindsay?
We are. Just let me know when you're ready for me to advance.
Great. Well, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council, thanks uh for the opportunity to uh present to you the survey research data. I think you'll find it uh interesting and hopefully useful. Uh, if we can go to the first slide. There we go. Okay, uh, great. Uh, so uh just to give you a little bit of a review, uh, the purpose of the survey was to look at a couple of different areas. First, we had a climate section which dealt with uh favorability of the actions the state and local government had taken uh in um an effort to address the crisis. Uh, we also wanted to look at city satisfaction and management of taxpayer dollars. Uh, we wanted to look at um potential support for a sales tax measure uh that would be on the ballot this fall. Uh, we want to also prioritize the features. Those are the things that we might spend the money on. Uh, we want to also uh look at a variety of different informational and critical statements, and you'll see those as we go through this. Uh, and then, of course, there's a variety of demographic and behavioral characteristics that we look at uh to make sure the sample is representative of the uh city of San Rafael. Next slide, please. Uh, in terms of the methodology, more specifically, this was an online and phone survey. Uh, and as you can see here from the breakdown, uh, we're now getting a vast majority of our interviews from online surveys, either from a text invitation or from an email invitation. Uh, but of course, we find that we're missing small demographic segments. They're particularly senior segments, and the place that we can most readily get those, although it's challenging, is by making phone calls, and so those are usually landline calls. Uh, the universe that we looked at was November twenty-twenty voters uh in the city. We were in the field from May eleventh through the seventeenth. Uh, the average phone survey was twenty-one minutes long. Uh, we don't know how long it takes people to complete it online because you can start the survey, take a couple of questions, go have dinner, uh, and come back hours later, and we know that people do because they hit the final submit button really twenty-four hours a day, uh, which is great because now we're on their time rather than the opposite, uh, so they can participate whenever they they can. Uh, our total sample size is around uh three and a half percent. Uh, next slide, please, or actually two slides because next one's uh heading. There we go. So the um first question in the climate section, as I mentioned, was the opinion on the job the state and local governments are doing uh to address the COVID crisis. Uh, the way we've been analyzing this since the shelter in place started was looking at the total favorable, and you see that in the box in the lower left-hand corner, uh, where we're seventy-six percent favorable, uh, and uh sixteen percent unfavorable. That's a four-point-eight-to-one ratio, positive to negative. To put this in context, we've seen this be as low as sixty percent favorable, uh, and we've seen it as high as eighty percent. So San Rafael clearly um is at the high end of the spectrum that we've seen since we started asking this question in March. Next slide, please. Uh, the uh next question that we added in March uh as well was one that we had asked back during the Great Recession, and it's simply a forecast on the economy, and we were looking uh for them to forecast into the fall when obviously a potential measure might be on the ballot. Uh, you see that we're about thirty percent uh think it'll be better, twenty-one about the same, and thirty-nine think it'll be worse. I've seen this as low as thirty uh on the worst category and as high as forty-four. So again, you're not at the high end of the range, but uh you're above the middle for sure, uh, and and so there's a little more pessimism in San Rafael about what may be the econ- economic uh situation in uh in October. Next slide, please. Uh, in terms of the satisfaction with the city's services, uh, this is a question you've seen um in the past, uh, and what we've done here is just look specifically at this year, uh, adding the variant somewhat together. Uh, we're at seventy-three percent in rounded numbers favorable or satisfied, fifteen percent dissatisfied, and four-point-eight-to-one positive to negative ratio. Again, that's a pretty good place to be uh from a historical perspective. Next slide. Uh, this is the satisfaction with the city's management of taxpayer funds, uh, and much the same kind of question, with a few more categories, but if you add the variant somewhat satisfied together, you see we're at forty-seven percent in round numbers, uh, and twenty-two percent dissatisfied for a two-point-one-to-one ratio. We compare that to the resident satisfaction in February of twenty nineteen. Uh, we're actually doing a little better. There's not statistically significant increase with the margin of error we talked about, uh, but it's going in the right direction, and so we certainly think that's a positive. Next slide, please. So at this point in the survey, we've uh switched gears away from sort of the background, the climate section, and we get into specifically the sales tax proposal, and you can see the wording on the box on the right-hand side of the slide. Uh, this is designed to meet the state requirements. First of all, it can't be more than seventy-five words. Uh, it has talked about the tax rate, which is in this case is a quarter percent. It has to have the sunset, which is nine years, and it has to identify how much money it raises per year. Those are all required by state law. Uh, the way we analyze this in terms of feasibility of a measure is we have the definitely and probably yes together, and you can see that's at fifty-six percent, uh, and that's not a bad place to start, given uh the margin of error and the fact that this is a simple majority requirement uh for it to be approved. Next slide, please. So the next set of questions was a whole long list of things that we might spend the money on, uh, and they were all asked in a random order. Uh, however, the order you see here is based on the intensity of response, and we calculate that by assigning numeric values, and you see those across the bottom of the slide. A much more likely is a two, a somewhat more likely is a one, somewhat less likely is a minus one, and a much less likely is a minus two. Uh, that gives us a scale that could be as high as two or as low as minus two, uh, and we use that to rank uh each of these items, and it's a better way than just adding percentages together because you could have something that's forty percent much more likely, twenty percent somewhat more likely, that's sixty, uh, but you could also have the opposite. It could be twenty percent much more likely and forty percent somewhat more likely, which is also sixty, but obviously those are two entirely different sixties. So that bias uh of just adding percentages together is eliminated by uh using this intensity scale. We also look at groupings that are statistically uh related and are basically tied. Uh, so you see those defined by the tiers. So everything in tier one is essentially tied, and you can see that by looking at not just the intensities scores, but the percentage range of at least somewhat more likely, which is that arrow in blue on the right-hand side of the slide. So you can see that everything uh intensity aside in tier one is right around sixty-seven percent, uh, and that's good because this, again, is a simple majority measure that we're proposing, uh, and it includes maintain nine-one-one emergency response times at the top of the list, provide disaster and health emergency preparedness, and rapid response programs, which is a generic reference to uh the COVID crisis, obviously. Uh, enhance city street and pothole repair, uh, a more basic city service that we've seen in the past plays well, uh, and maintain city parks and playgrounds rounding out the top tier. Uh, in our second tier, uh, we are a little bit further down the list. Uh, we are as high as sixty percent, at least somewhat more likely, but as low as fifty-seven. Again, they're all above the simple majority threshold that we need to be successful, but they're not as important clearly as the top-tier items. Uh, and you can see those are maintaining police officers, maintaining senior services and programs, maintaining neighborhood police patrols, uh, maintain gang prevention and crime investigation, uh, maintain local services to help address homelessness, and maintain after-school and summer programs for youth and teens. Next slide, please. Uh, the next slide uh shows you the remainder of the items that we asked. As I said, it was a long list, uh, and these are mostly positive. Uh, by the time we get to the bottom of the list, Uh, by the time we get to the bottom of the list, obviously, we're well below the 50% threshold. Uh, the intensity scores are still positive, but you know, we've got to hit that 50 plus 1. So uh, the items on this list from a batwell, from really the top on down, are just not as helpful as the items on the previous page. Next slide, please. Uh, the second long list of items that we asked, again, in a random order, was informational statements. And these include accountability items as well as things that are a, a little more positive kinds of arguments. Uh, the methodology is largely the same, although the scale is different. So you can't compare one of the intensity scores here directly with the previous question uh, just because this is a, a much more likely, somewhat more likely, no effect response category. There's no negative side of the equation. Uh, and so as you can see here, again, in tier 1, we have um, a couple of items. Uh, every penny from this measure must uh, stay in San Rafael and no funds can be taken by Sacramento. Uh, obviously, an accountability item, uh, which um, is almost always at the top of the list. Uh, then you see none of the money raised by the measure would be used for city administrator salaries. Uh, also an accountability provision, uh, and again, something that we see over and over again uh, at the top of the list. Uh, what's notable at the top of the list is despite the fact that we were uh, well over a month into the shelter in place, the COVID uh, crisis is not one of the items that is the number one or number two reason to support this measure. Not to say that it's not important, and as we get into tier 2, it certainly um, is, but it's certainly not at the top of the list in our tier 1 grouping. Uh, in our second grouping, we then have visitors and shoppers from outside San Rafael will pay their fair share for local city services, so homeowners won't have to shoulder the entire burden. Uh, at 1.13 or about 67% at least, somewhat more likely to support the measure. Uh, then since 1980, the state has taken millions of dollars from San Rafael to deal with its own budget. This measure provides a guaranteed source of local funding to maintain critical resident services. Uh, then the measure will help the city provide emergency health services needed to respond to the COVID uh, or the coronavirus crisis and prepare for future outbreaks. So that's where uh, the COVID-19 crisis first uh, appears as a positive, and it's a pretty strong positive. Uh, I don't want to leave you the impression that it's not. It's just not at the top of the list. What's at the top of the list is the things we've seen in other revenue measures in the state as well as in San Rafael. Uh, and then on down the list, I won't read all of them in deference to the council's time. Uh, and moving to the next slide, uh, you see the remainder of the items that we tested. Uh, again, all of these are positive on both slides, but um, they're just not as strong as the, those at the top, in the top uh, top groups. Uh, and then one more slide uh, shows you the rest of the items that we asked. Uh, and obviously, it was a long list, but uh, as we move down here, we're getting closer to that simple majority threshold and not, not as helpful. So moving on to the next slide, after we've described all of the things that we might spend the money on, as well as talking about some of the accountability and positive reasons to, to do a revenue measure such as this, we come back to the same ballot wording a second time, and you see we go from 56 to 64%. Uh, that's obviously the direction we would expect it to be going. Uh, it's just outside of the statistical um, margin of error, so this is a significant finding uh, and, and something that's obviously encouraging for a measure as we're describing. Move to the next slide. Uh, this was a list of hypothetical negatives. The methodology is largely the same as the informational statements. Uh, we don't put a minus sign in front of them to make them seem more negative. The higher they are, the worse they are. So there are some things that are on this list that um, again, are fairly typical for uh, for tech um, arguments, uh, hypothetical arguments against a revenue measure. And on top of the list is there are no rules that direct the spending of the sales tax dollars and no guarantee that funds will be spent as promised. That actually is true. A general tax doesn't uh, commit to spending in any one area. It gives the council authority. And that's why those accountability measures that we saw in the previous slide uh, were so um, so important uh, is to give people a, a sense that that money will be spent as they would like to see. Uh, then we see pensions. We see references to the um, split role measure that's going to be on the ballot statewide um, and the, and the tax rate in San Rafael. Uh, all of those are things we need to be aware of. I think the important thing here is that, again, uh, while you might think that the coronavirus would be the number one reason not to support this kind of measure, uh, it's not. And in fact, it's way down at the bottom of the list. Uh, again, not, not that it's not important, but it's just not as uh, as influential as those typical things that we've seen in other, against other measures in San Rafael. So moving on then to the next slide, uh, we see the ballot question yet a third time, but this time it's after those negatives, and the survey is structured intentionally. We see how high we go up and we see how low we go down. You can see we're down to 54% with the margin of error. We're still above the simple majority threshold. Uh, I think this is a little bit of a worst-case analysis just because of the structure of the survey and what we're trying to, to do. Um, so I think it, it, we are above the simple majority uh, that we need to be after people uh, hear all of the arguments, positive and negative. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, and so the final slide is, we weren't sure where we'd wind up and that we'd be in a positive situation, so we wanted to see if doing a shorter sunset, six years instead of nine, and you can see that in the wording on the right-hand side, would help us. Uh, and, and as you can see here, it really doesn't. We're virtually at the same level as we were at before. Uh, 54% in round numbers, so a nine-year is fine. Uh, six-year doesn't really help. So that's the data that I have for you this evening. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions, and I know also that uh, Charles Heath may have some comments as well.
Charles, uh-huh. Uh, well, first, uh, Brian, thanks for, for the input. It's uh, it's significant, I would suggest. Uh, Charles, before going to the council, any uh, any follow-up comment?
Yeah, just to add on to Brian's comments, um, you know, when we started resuming polling after uh, shelter in place, uh, we didn't really know what to expect, um, but we've been pretty encouraged. The results you're seeing here tonight are pretty consistent with what we're seeing in communities throughout the Bay Area and other parts of the state, that, you know, despite the economic challenges and the health challenges and uncertainty, uh, voters remain willing to make investments to help preserve their uh, their uh, public services. So um, if you do choose to move forward with this measure for November, we have an August 7th deadline to adopt the resolution and or- and ordinance that would place the measure on the ballot. So uh, with your direction, our next steps would be to implement an informational outreach program to raise awareness in the community about your budget challenges and what this measure would contribute towards those challenges, um, and develop uh, the legal language for your measure, working in conjunction with your city attorney, and then bring all that back to you in July for a formal consideration.
Thanks for that, and I, I will mention that uh, I did have a preview of, of this uh, a week or so ago. And I, I generally have a, feel like I have a sense of where the community is at on a number of measures. This time, I must admit, I was not at all certain, and uh, um, I was pleasantly surprised to some degree uh, with the results, even with the margin of error. Um, so I, I thank you for uh, helping us out with that. Uh, we'll go to other comments and then public and, and back for final, so. Any comments by, Christine, do you have a comment?
Oh, I was just gonna reiterate that tonight's item is just an informational uh, report. And to Charles' point, if, if the council's interested in giving staff direction to take next steps, we would have to develop measure language and, and begin working on that to bring a resolution. So that, that's really what we're looking for is, is a, a sense of, of where the council is and, and what sort of next steps you'd like us to take.
Yeah, good, good comment. Thanks for adding that. Uh, I don't see anyone. Is there public, any public comments?
Uh, we have no callers on the line. And if you are on YouTube and you wish to provide public comment in the live chat, please uh, do so now. And if you would, please write public comment prior to your comments, as well as introduce yourself, so we know that you'd like them right into the record. Okay, so we do have a couple.
Okay.
Give me one moment. We're gonna put them together. Uh, we have one, well, we have a couple. Thank you, Christine, for the clarification. Otherwise, I would have, I would have, I would have had a really long and intense comment. Good night.
No, thanks for that.
And then we're gonna put together the next comments.
Say again, are there any, uh, any other comments?
There is one more. We're stringing them together right now.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay. Education is just one of the issues I tackled upon. Pardon my air. I'm only a high school student, Mayor Phillips. Wouldn't it be nice to let communities know this? When Chief Bishop's officer look at me, a 16-year-old Latino walking down the street on my way home suspiciously, that's not serving communities. If you had a budget raised to train police officers who are, who are there to protect and serve, to not look at Latino children suspiciously, that's the problem. Defund the police. And that concludes public comments.
Okay, uh, we'll bring it back. As I mentioned, I, I'm somewhat familiar with this uh, to a preview, and uh, we've been talking about, we as a council have been talking about this matter now for quite some time, even before uh, coronavirus uh, set us back considerably. Uh, with some of the uh, the other things we have in mind that, that we think the benefit, uh, the community would greatly benefit from amplified, it would suggest by coronavirus. And um, so as a result of it, I'll just tell you where I'm at. Uh, I've been in favor of moving in this direction for some time. We uh, this evening had a budget review and, and we're all pretty familiar with the consequences. Uh, over this year and a half period, let's call it, who knows beyond that, uh, but certainly I would suggest uh, that the community has expressed themselves through this survey, not fine and final, but nevertheless, it gives us a pretty good indication as to where um, the sample size is anyway, which is uh, uh, I think it's indicative of the, the entirety when you factor in the uh, you know, the plus or minus. And so I believe that we should proceed uh, to give the community an opportunity to make a clear statement as to whether or not they wish to provide this additional quarter percent for the services we'll enumerate. Anyone else? I see no other comments, and therefore, a motion would be appropriate for the, the acceptance of the report.
Well, Mayor, uh, Mayor Phillips, i- if I could, um, yeah, I'd like to um, sort of provide my point of view as well, and I, I, it aligns with yours. In other words, I think that we should proceed and ask staff to do the necessary legwork to bring this back to us so that we are positioned to put this on the ballot this fall and allow the community to decide. I think it um, is especially important in light of the budget that we discussed earlier and Nadine's projections, her um, conservative projections, that show we're going to see a decline in the level of service we provide to our constituents. And certainly, that's going to show up by the election time. So I think this will provide our residents with an opportunity to decide whether or not it's appropriate to try to backfill some of that reduction in service with this additional sales tax. I had originally thought that COVID might put paid to any opportunity to bring this measure before the public, but in fact, I think maybe the opposite might be true, and that's what's coming out in the survey responses. So to Brian Godby, thank you uh, for that hard work and for shedding some light on what was a very difficult question for us as we went into this survey work. But those are my two cents.
Good comment. Uh, anyone else before we go to motion? It doesn't appear that's the case, and therefore, a motion would be appropriate by someone.
Then I move that we accept the report.
Thank you.
Second.
Listen, second roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Colin.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I am that curious for zero, one absent. Uh, and once again, Brian and Charles, uh, thanks for your help on this. Very enlightening, more so than any other survey I can re- think in uh, recent, recent history. So thank you for helping us make our next step forward. And have a good evening. Sorry it took a little long tonight.
Uh, no worries.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
With that, uh, let's see. Let's see where we're at. We're almost there. Councilmember reports, yes, councilmember reports, uh, anyone? In which case, uh, since there's no uh, no item under San Rafael's special agency, we shall adjourn. Have a good evening, everybody. Thanks.
Good night, everyone.
Night all.